Day, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty one. I want to thank Councilman Hollibur, who suggested that we move the meeting from an unusual election day. Election day is usually the first Tuesday, and never a conflict, but by moving so that we made sure that our voters, our citizens, had access to the polls up until the end. So, thank you, Councilman Hollibur. That is why we're having the meeting tonight on Wednesday. All right, with that, if we could please have roll call.
Councilmember Hollibur.
Present.
Councilmember Phong.
Present.
Councilmember Papen.
Here.
Vice Mayor Oliva.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Snyder.
Present.
All councilmembers are present.
Thank you. If everyone could please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have what is probably going to be an exciting agenda tonight. We do, because we had August recess, have quite a few proclamations tonight. So, the way it's going to work tonight is we will have one person accepting some of the proclamations. Some are simply going to be mailed, and we will try to get through these respectfully, because they're all very important, but quickly with that. So, first one is. You've got it for me, thank you. And accepting the proclamation tonight will be Gina Miranda, if she is queued up, if she wants to say anything. Whereas, National Hispanic Heritage Month is an opportunity to celebrate the rich cultural traditions and honor the significant achievements of our Hispanic and Latin American communities. And whereas the much month-long celebration recognizes the valuable contributions made by residents of Hispanic descent to all aspects of American life, including leadership in public service, business, the arts, education, and civil rights. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month provides a special opportunity for teachers, schools, as well as public and private organizations, to focus on many Hispanic Americans whose lives have shaped our common history and heritage. And whereas during Hispanic Heritage Month and throughout the year, it is imperative to embrace our diverse history so that all children can see themselves in our nation's past, know that they have a crucial role in its future. And whereas the theme for this year symbolizes the importance of reflecting on how great our tomorrow can be if we hold on to our resilience and hope. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty one, to October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty one, as National Hispanic Heritage Month. And. Ms. Miranda, if you'd like to say a few words.
Yes, my name is Gina Miranda. I'm here on behalf of Millbrae Anti-Racism Coalition, ARC. Can you hear me?
Yep, you're coming good.
Good. And there's been a lot going on around this. I'm so glad that Millbrae prioritized this, and it's so great to see Millbrae continuing to emphasize different cultures that are here. And I'm a culture geek, so I love seeing all of this stuff. But when it comes to Latin and where I come from, it's even better. So, I totally appreciate it, and I know that folks in the city like to see themselves represented and like to see the city acknowledging them. I've heard that a lot, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. And did you want to say anything about the graphic that you're showing?
Um, yeah, yeah, I love it. It's very different from all the standard ones I've seen, which is really nice. And it's, it's, it looks like it's got the Quetzalcoatl bird there, which is a throwback to some of the Aztec indigenous ancient civilizations from Mexico and also, and also more so Central America, though, I think, more so than Mexico. But Aztecs and Mayans, all that kind of stuff, but then in a really nice updated design. It's very cool.
Well, I congratulate.
Michael for setting this up.
I congratulate the Anti-Racist Coalition, the Millbrae Anti-Racist Coalition for this, and it will be, I believe, placed in front of City Hall for the next month. So, I congratulate all of you. I would also point out, if anyone is watching, we have openings on several of our committees and on the Youth Advisory Committee, and we would love to have as much diversity as we can get on our committees and commissions.
Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk, if we can move to Capitol Week. Whereas, September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty one, marks the two hundred and thirty-fourth anniversary of drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas at this convention, the world's oldest written oldest written constitution was drafted by the United States, thus outlining the fundamental principles by which our nation is governed. And whereas the Constitution ensures the distribution of functions and responsibilities among three separate branches and a system of checks and balances to calibrate those powers, ultimately ensuring the protection of individual rights and liberties. And whereas it is important to officially recognize this document and the anniversary of its creation, and to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas Public Law nine one five guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim September seventeenth through the twenty-third, two thousand and twenty one, as Constitution Week. And this request actually came to us by a local chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. But I actually like this one, because we're still in a COVID pandemic. We have wanted to bring back a partnership between the City of Millbrae and the Millbrae Lions Club, called Youth in Government, but with the pandemic and the academic world, we haven't been able to do so. But I am hopeful that next year, now that I know there is such a thing as Constitution Week, that we can bring back youth in government next September, two thousand and twenty-two. In addition, we, Millbrae, held a Council of Cities Dinner, which is a gathering of elected officials, and Congresswoman Jackie Speer came and spoke at our dinner. This was on July twenty-third, and talked about what happened on January sixth, how happy, actually, she has already congratulated our city for our proclamation condemning January sixth, but also about the need for Americans to have a better understanding of the U.S. Constitution. She later, the next day, at the League of Women Voters, said she's very concerned by the lack of Americans' understanding of what our Constitution means. So, I'm really happy that we are presenting this, and I hope this becomes something that we actually do in activity every year and incorporate our program in with our young people. Thank you, Elaine. We can move on. And here we have our new Environmental Sustainability Manager, accepting this, if Andrea Papa John can get ready. In fact, I haven't asked, oh, well, I'll read it. Whereas the City of Millbrae takes great pride in protecting and maintaining its exceptional landscapes, environment, and natural resources. And whereas the City of Millbrae supports clean and safe water, land, and air for our community. And whereas proper management of waste is key to preserving our environment and strengthening our economy. And whereas pollution prevention is a cost-effective management tool that can substantially reduce the generation and impact of waste, conserve resources, and protect the environment. And recognizing Pollution Prevention Week, celebrating thirty-one years of the Pollution Prevention Act of nineteen ninety, where Congress declared it to be a national policy of the United States that pollution should be prevented and reduced at the source whenever possible. And whereas environmental sustainability provides an opportunity for our schools, businesses, citizens, and government to partner, to work proactively together towards a prosperous and sustainable future. And whereas increasing awareness and attention to pollution prevention is in the best interest of Millbrae's environment and economy, now, therefore, be it resolved, we, the members of Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim September nineteenth to the twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty one, as National Pollution Prevention Week. And Andrea, there is a list of activities underneath this, but I know you're going to tell us what all the people of Millbrae and our businesses can do as we celebrate and participate in National Pollution Prevention Week. Go ahead, Andrea.
Thank you, Mayor Schneider, and Vice Mayor Oliva, and councilmembers, Andrea Papa John. So, this year's, the city is celebrating Pollution Prevention Week by holding a couple of events. Today, we had an educational table downtown Millbrae Square, and we greeted some people, answered local environmental questions, and provided some information and handouts. And this Saturday, September eighteenth, from nine-thirty until noon, is Coastal Cleanup Day. And the event will be at Central Park. We'll all meet there at nine-thirty. Feel free to come later if you need to, but we're going to start at nine-thirty. We'll do a citywide cleanup. We have maps and about twenty designated locations, so we'll send people and groups out to the different locations to clean up, and then we'll come back and meet back up at Central Park and have lunch around eleven-thirty, twelve. And that, and the city is providing lunch, so we hope you'll stay and join us for that. And then we also request that students wear their school colors so that we can show your school spirit and have a nice big photo op. And afterwards, we will be holding a Monarch Butterfly Pollinator Gardening Event to plant milkweed, and that is from two to four P.M., and we encourage everyone to stay and volunteer if you'd like to help us plant that garden. So, those, that's what we have, you know, planned. We hope to see everyone on Saturday, if you can join us. And I'm just really looking forward to, you know, engaging with the community. It's been great to get out to some of these local events recently. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Papa John. I really, truly do hope we get everybody out there. And if you're a Boy Scout or a Leo, wear your colors. It makes for a really lovely photograph. So, join us on Saturday by nine-thirty. Thank you. Elaine, if we can move to the next. Okay, and Jean Perry will be accepting this at the end, if Jean can get ready. Whereas, Millbrae will join the country, state, and county in honoring Suicide Prevention Month, which is the entire month of September, to spread the message that suicide can be prevented. And whereas in two thousand and twenty, seventy-nine people died by suicide, a thirty-two percent increase from the sixty people in two thousand and nineteen. And in San Mateo County, over fourteen thousand one hundred calls were made to the San Mateo County Star Vista Crisis Hotline, a fifteen percent increase from the twelve thousand three hundred calls in two thousand and nineteen. And whereas, with the pandemic changing the fabric of our lives, suicide prevention is more important than ever, and all Millbrae residents are urged to play a role in supporting each other and preventing suicide by knowing the signs of suicide, finding the words to communicate, and reaching out to local twenty-four-seven resources, including our local Star Vista Crisis Hotline, and I'll read the number, five, six, five, zero, five, seven, nine, zero, three, five, zero, or the National Suicide Prevention Hotline, one, eight-hundred, two, seven, three, talk. And whereas residents can also play a role in suicide prevention by supporting local Suicide Prevention Month events and communication campaigns. In California and San Mateo County, the two thousand and twenty-one September Suicide Prevention Month theme is "Supportive Transitions: Reconnect, Re-enter, Rebuild." And now, therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim September, two thousand and twenty one, as Suicide Prevention Month. And we call upon Millbrae residents and partners to work together to prevent suicide in our community. Ms. Perry.
On behalf of the Suicide Prevention Committee and Office of Diversity and Equity of San Mateo County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, I accept this proclamation with gratitude and hope. This year's Suicide Prevention Month theme is "Transitions: Reconnect, Re-enter, Rebuild," a perfect fit for our times amid the COVID-nineteen pandemic, resumption of in-person school for our students, our efforts to combat racism and inequities based on otherisms, our attention riveted on wildfires and sea level rise. San Mateo County continues to have the second lowest rate of suicide in our state, with Santa Clara being the lowest. In the face of the increased suicide deaths in San Mateo County in two thousand and twenty, despite a drop in overall suicides in California in two thousand and twenty, there's no question that whether it's one or seventy-nine, it's too many. The California State Statistics have shown that an increase in suicides of youth aged ten to fourteen of Asian and Pacific Islander background, and an increase in suicide deaths in youth aged ten to twenty-four in Black, Hispanic, and female residents of California, despite this drop in the total suicides in two thousand and twenty. Those of us who have been touched by suicide agree that even one suicide is too many. Ask my daughter, who lost her dad to suicide at age nine. As individuals, we can make our wellness and resilience a priority. Without being a suicide prevention expert, you can contribute to helping prevent suffering and loss due to suicide. You can look beyond yourself and recognize that connectedness and relationships are protective factors. You can support safe and supportive schools and workplaces in our community. You can influence public policy, supporting gun violence restraining orders, school suicide prevention programs, mental health professional training in suicide prevention. With individual and collective actions, lives can be saved from suicide. There is hope. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. And again, we will have more information. Please reach out. Please talk. Elaine, if we could move on to Disaster Prevention Month, and do we have Chief Barron with us?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you, Chief. I will hand it off to you. And in fact, if you have it in front of you, I would let you read it, so I'm not doing all the talking. But if you don't, I'll read it.
I can see it, but I have to wear readers, even on my computer, so.
If you, okay. Whereas, National Preparedness Month is an observance, observance each September to raise awareness about the importance of preparing our homes, businesses, and communities for disasters and emergencies. And whereas during National Preparedness Month, we also recognize the bravery and sacrifices of our first responders and emergency volunteers, who are our first line of defense in so many crises. And whereas the two thousand and twenty-one theme is "Prepare to Protect." Preparing for disasters is protecting everyone you love. San Mateo County encourages all residents to build a supplies kit, otherwise known as a go-kit, and make a plan for before, during, and after a disaster. And whereas residents are urged to make preparedness a priority and work together to ensure that individuals, families, and communities are prepared for disasters and emergencies of any type. And whereas those who prepare for emergencies can recover faster and help others who may also be affected, demonstrating community resilience in the face of adversity. Now, therefore, we, the members of Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim September twenty-one, September, two thousand and twenty-one, as National Preparedness Month. And Chief Barron, I was so glad we could celebrate the twentieth anniversary of the horrible September eleventh, two thousand and one. And I, and I, all of council, thanks you, our first responders, CERT, and the volunteers who come to help in times of disaster. Please take it away.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. Very much appreciated. On behalf of Bill Riley, Millbrae's Disaster Preparedness Manager, I'll accept this proclamation. And on behalf of the City of Millbrae, I accept this. And I do want to just take a minute and thank you, Mayor, and the other council members, and especially manager Tom Williams, for putting together on nine-eleven, that ceremony. I knew that a few people would show up, and when I drove up, I was blown away of how many citizens were there, veterans, councilpeople, county board members. It was very well received, so thank you very much.
Thank you. And again, thank you for everything. Chief, do you want to update the people of Millbrae of where all our central county firefighters have been the last three and a half months, four months?
So, I don't have the list in front of me. It's quite long, but I'll give you the states first. They started in way northern California. They came back for a day. They went to Oregon for fourteen days. Then from Oregon, they went to Montana for fourteen days. When they're in Montana, that's when the Dixie Fire broke. So, they went, left Montana to the Dixie Fire. We put up two other companies. One at the Dixie, and then one, when the Calder Fire up in near South Lake Tahoe broke, we sent an engine up there, and then our other engine got sent to the Calder Fire. So, in total, I couldn't tell you how many people, at least fifty people from our department have been on deployments. And our Type Six, it went out in early June, and it's been out two months solid. And I was just told we expect that back Friday from the Dixie Fire, and it got released from the incident.
Excellent. Well, thank you. I wanted the public to understand that even if we aren't having fires right here, our firefighters, and in certain cases, our deputies are out covering other areas under mutual aid agreements. And you really do a tremendous job, and you're away from your families, and we're sad, but we're grateful for that. I know the other council members would probably like to say something, but in the, because of timing, I'll hold that off. But again, thank you. Be safe. You know, and the biggest part that our residents can help is please get your go-kit set. And if you want to, sign up to become a CERT, a Community Emergency Response Team member, and check Zone Haven so that you know how to evacuate should a fire happen in our area. Thank you. All right, our last one is Prostate Cancer Month. And I won't, I'm not going to read this one, because we do not have the doctor from Mary Seton who asked us to do this, but I'll read a few sections of it. Can't prostate cancer is the number-two cause of death in the men, in our men. And what we strongly encourage you is to work out a plan with your doctor and stay on top of this. And we thank Mary Seton Hospital for bringing this to the City of Millbrae's attention, and so that we can remind all men, please make sure you've checked in with your doctor, and please keep your prostate in good health. This will be sent to Mary Seton Hospital and the cancer team up there. Thank you, Elaine. Okay, moving on, City Manager, it is time for Agenda Overview and Staff Briefing.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening to you. Good evening to the members of the City Council. Nice to see you back after the recess. Again, Tom Williams, City Manager here at the City of Millbrae. So, real quick, it was brought up by Andrea about our Coastal Cleanup Day. So, we hope to see everyone out there. It's going to be a very busy Saturday for the City of Millbrae, because we also have the Millbrae Mid-Autumn Festival. And that festival will start at twelve noon and go to seven-thirty P.M. along the three hundred and four hundred blocks of Broadway. And the Mid-Autumn Festival is a traditional Asian celebration for the end of the autumn harvest. So, people attending the festival will enjoy mooncakes, which are traditional food for the celebration, live music, karaoke, and a lot of other cultural and fun festivities. So, we'd love to see you all out this Saturday on Broadway here in Millbrae for the Mid-Autumn Festival. We also are asking all of our residents, I think most of we are familiar with the success that we've had with our movies in the park, so all residents can take a few minutes to vote for October's. Millbrae Goes to the Movies movie, and that website is B I T dot L Y backslash M I L R E C. So, B I T dot L Y backslash Milrec with one L. So, by September thirtieth, vote for the movie this October, and that will take place on the third Friday every month. And then we also have our Beats and Brews, which is, used to be Music in the Park, but we started it in downtown a few years ago, and it's grown and has been very successful on bringing it to downtown. People then can patronize our local restaurants and enjoy live music on Broadway. It's this Thursday, September sixteenth, which is tomorrow. It starts at four-thirty, because we actually have two bands. We have an opening band, and then we have a band called Proud Mary, which does a lot of Creedence Clearwater music and other iconic music and songs. So, tomorrow, four-thirty to eight P.M., another festival. Millbrae is becoming known as the City of Festivals, which is fun, fantastic for all of our residents. But again, tomorrow, starting at four-thirty on the three hundred block of Broadway. And then lastly, as a follow-up to last year's Town Hall Meetings on Equity and Inclusion, we've been planning with Mills High School and the Millbrae School District a series of workshops with our youth, so grades eight through twelve, that we can reach out to them and have student-led, student-centered, interactive workshops and discussion on inclusion and equity. And that will take place on September twenty-ninth. At, so all of our school kids are invited. More information can be found at W W W dot Eventbrite dot com. Look on the city's website, and we look forward to our youth being engaged in these very important discussions. So, Mayor Council, moving on to the council agenda this evening. Item number two, calendar of events, reports of bills and claims, and then report out of our closed session of July twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, September second, two thousand and twenty, twenty-one. I'll look to our city attorney, Ms. Joan Caspin, to do that. And then this evening's closed session, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, which I'd actually like to defer to the next meeting, because our attorney that was in the closed session is not in attendance at the meeting. Then approval of meeting minutes for the regular meeting of July twenty-seventh. We have no reports from any committee or commission this evening. Then we move into public communication. Public communication is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council on any item not on the agenda, and there is a time limit of three minutes for any speaker. Then we move to the consent calendar. We have three items, starting with item number five. Those are the appointments to our city committee. Item number six is to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with thirteen on-call specialized planning consulting firms with a total amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars a year per firm. These would be three-year contracts. Now, those, that budget will not come from our general fund. It is a hundred percent cost recovery as we receive development applications within our planning department, so it's a hundred percent cost recovery. Item number seven is to consider a resolution authorizing the project complete at thirty, a Roos Seaco, and that was a storm drain replacement project. We do have one public hearing item tonight, that's item number eight, and it's to consider a resolution overriding the San Mateo City-County Association of Governments and San Mateo County Airport Land Use Commission's determination of inconsistency with the policies of the Comprehensive Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. And this is an override that has to do with allowing BioService Level Two land uses in the airport land use designated area number two. Then moving on to existing business, item number nine is to reject all four bids that we received for the Millbrae Recreation Center Low Voltage System and authorize a rebid and authorize the city manager to execute the construction contract. Item number ten, under New Business, is a discussion and guidance on the formation of a Cultural Inclusion and Equity Commission or Committee. Item number eleven is to consider a citywide mandate on proof of COVID-nineteen vaccination records prior on proof of COVID-19 vaccination records prior to entering any indoor/outdoor dining, fitness, entertainment venue within the city of Millbrae. Item number 12 is to provide guidance and recommendations for a resolution and proposed bylaw bylaw amendments being considered at the 2021 League of California Cities Annual Conference, which is the end of this month in September. Then we move to council comments. There is no closed session and then adjournment. So that is the overview, Madam Mayor, of the agenda this evening. The mayor's on mute. I've asked her to unmute, so we'll give her a few minutes.
We love the mute button. City Attorney, could you please give a report out on July 27 and September 2, closed-door meeting? City Manager has asked that the 15th be left till next time. Thank you.
I understand. I will report out on July 27. The city council met in a closed session to discuss a matter of potential litigation, and there was no reportable action to place on the record as a result of that session. The city man, the city council met on September 2 to discuss a matter of existing litigation. This is the lawsuit of Anton Devco Inc. versus City of Millbrae. And again, there was no action arising out of that closed session. Back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, City Attorney Casman. We, next up is approval of the minutes for September, September, July 27, 2021. If there are no changes, if I could have a motion in a second?
So moved, Oliva.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I can second that.
Thank you, Councilman Fung. Any discussion? City Clerk, could you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Hallibur.
Aye.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Councilmember Papin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Oliva.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
The regular meeting minutes of July 27, 2021 is approved by the vote of five to zero.
There are no oral reports, so moving from agenda item number four, public communications, as the city manager said, these are for items that are not later on the agenda. It is a three-minute time limit. And City Clerk, could you please give quick instructions on how they raise their hands if they're first timers? And if they're on the phone, I had to do a meeting where I was on the phone. I couldn't get through. So please give quick instructions.
Gladly. So all members of public who wish to speak, please raise your hand. It should be on the bottom bar of your screen. However, if you're calling in, please press star nine to raise your hand.
I know there should be at least one.
I believe Kathleen Kamora would like to speak, and also I think Carl looked like he is interested in speaking as well.
Very good. Ms. Kamora, if you could go and and then the gentleman, the screen just changed.
Thank you so much, Mayor Snyder. I would just like to remind the community and thank the city of Millbrae for supporting the upcoming Millbrae Japanese Culture Festival. This is our 16th year and it will be held on October 3, which is two weeks from this coming Sunday. So it's closely, it's going to be upon us very shortly. The banner will be going across Broadway. And we thank our sponsors. We thank our volunteers. We thank all our vendors. Going to be a very interesting festival. We are sold out. And I, this is a program which is at the printers. We will have copied the printed programs at the festival. We will have food. We will have wine and sake poured by Bacchus Wines. And we will also have beer, a Sahi beer, and soft drinks and water. And there'll be lots of activities for everybody, for children, for adults. There will be an Iki Banner demonstration, a tea demonstration, lots of interesting performances on stage. So I do hope the community can come out. I'm sure hopefully we will have some good weather. But thank you to the city of Millbrae because without the support of the city of Millbrae and the many departments of the city, we couldn't do it. So you know, all of us on the committee, there are eight of us on the committee. We thank the city very much for their support and also the Millbrae Chamber of Commerce. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kamora, and good luck. It is always a lovely event. I hope I pronounced this correctly, Mr. Narcisse, and then I see Councilwoman Papin, Maybel Regaspe, in that order.
Hi, everyone. Yes, you pronounced my last name correctly. My name is Carl Narcisse. I'm a resident of 819 Helen Drive in Millbrae. I am, I guess, calling in to discuss potential traffic calming measures along Helen Drive between Taioga Drive and Larkspur. I know it's a major through fare for folks who come from 280 to El Camino, but I know that a number of families with young kids along that strip of Helen Drive are worried about the speed of of cars, really at any point of the day, but I guess primarily during the the beginning of the work hours as well as the end of the workday. There tends to be excessive speeding throughout that that strip. And we're curious to know what type of traffic and calming measures could be enacted just for the sake of various families along that route. Personally speaking, I've had a few conversations with folks. I know there's a need for for emergency vehicles to get to and fro that that strip, to get from one part of the corridor to another. But I'm curious if there's there's measures such as potentially maybe not a speed bump, but speed humps along that particular route, just to kind of help remedy some of the speeding there. I know there's talks about potentially bringing like delineators to that strip of Helen Drive. I guess some of the concern around that is that it may be kind of a more of a short-term solution rather than something that's actually long-term, especially with the number of kids here who are young in elementary school at the very end, Meadows Elementary. And so we want to bring it to your attention. I know there's other families who have kids. I have three kids under the age of five. And I know there's other families here that have a few kids along that that strip. So I know that one or two may be on this line right now who voice the same concern, but I wanted to bring it to your attention. I think it's extremely important and I'd like to be proactive and work with the city to see what can be done rather than reactive and have someone, you know, not forbid something happened to one of the kids or when people are even backing out of their driveways and there's there's an incident. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. Again, Helen Drive between Taioga and Larkspur.
Thank you, Mr. Narcisse. Brown Act rules don't let council comment on items not on the agenda. But City Manager, is there an update you might be able to tell, help him connect with the correct staff?
Yeah, well, I will reach out to the gentleman and I think a neighborhood meeting is well-served here so we can discuss traffic calming and and listen to the neighborhood and see what we can come up with.
Thank you, City Manager.
I will reach out to him.
Thank you. Councilwoman Papin.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe the city manager left out, I believe, Fiddler's Green on Saturday is celebrating their 30th anniversary.
Oh, no.
So we need to mention that. It's always a good celebration there on the block. And given our timing this evening, I would like to recommend that after these comments, we switch to Too Many Comment period. Our research took a lot of time. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Regaspe.
I want to remind all speaker, please do not unmute yourself unless you're called on. I will unmute Ms. Mabel.
Hello?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yes. Okay, okay. Hi, good evening. My name is Maybel. I'm a resident of Millbrae. I moved here in 2014 and lived in Millbrae since then. I would like to speak or say something about Councilman Fung's proposal to mandate the vaccine.
Ma'am, ma'am, excuse me. That's going to be coming up on the agenda. This is for items not on the agenda. So we'll call you back. We'll call you back when that item comes up.
Okay.
And Mayor, for the for the resident, that's item number 11 on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you. Elaine, if you could pull the next person on the list.
It is Hung John.
No, 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 just the person on the list.
Okay, I'm on the list.
Is that Mr. John? Please go ahead.
Oh, yeah. Hi, can you all hear me? Yeah, so yeah, I dial in today. So I'm the resident of Millbrae. So I'm at 829 Helen Drive. So and I've heard the other resident mention about the same issues. So I experienced that today, this morning, like I almost had like the car accident because the car was like driving very fast on Helen Drive, right outside my house. And then I was almost hit by the car and that car was speeding. So it happened every day, especially it got worse like during the weekend or long holiday, long weekend holiday. So and it's really not safe to the family. I have moved to here, it's not too long ago, so about like two months. So and I do see something's wrong because this long stretch is always like busy and also with traffic and also people driving like very high speed, even that's like speed limit, that's a 30 and the radar and force. And I do not see any drivers slow down. So and we do have kids here and I do see other family around. So so many pedestrians walk by every day. So even nighttime. So and I do not think this is really safe. Even City of Millbrae has like a very good program described how to how to how to deal with this kind of safety issues for pedestrians. So I so far I do not see anything happen and even for the delineator around the area. It's not really close to my neighborhood. So and I do not think that would be helpful because after they pass that area, so they just speed up and then they can drive like 40 to 50. That's what I have seen. So I have actually called the city, the city recently. And then I believe they were mentioning the ambulance has their own concern that they do not like the road bump and or humps. And that's no way to do, seems seems to me that's no way to do anything. But I I work in the hospital and I do see like ambulance cross the like home or bombs like, you know, very often. So and I think that is not really the reason, the real reason why not doing something. So because we are talking about life and I I do think like it's not safe. It happened to me this morning, like in the morning, like ego crap. So and drivers like not slowing down and then I was almost hit by the car and the driver knows. So and I I hope the city will address this problem as soon as possible. But I do, I I will be patient on the plan, but I would like to really see something like some changes. Yeah, for the patient and pedestrian safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. John. Elaine, do you have his phone number so that you can give it to the city manager?
Mayor, we'll we'll reach out to, we'll reach out to these two addresses. I have 819 Helen Drive and 829 Helen Drive. And so we will absolutely follow up.
Excellent. Thank you, City Manager. Elaine, I don't see any other hands up. Is there anyone on the phone?
I do not see any callers by phone, but as a reminder, if there's anyone who wishes to speak, please raise your hand. It's hard for us to see everyone's video, so if you just wave at us, we won't be able to see that.
So just giving it a few seconds. Thank you, City Clerk. All right, closing, public communication and moving to consent calendar. And I've got screens. Consent calendar, item number five, appointments to city committee. It's an action. Item number six, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute professional service agreements with 13 on-call specialized training consulting, specialized planning consulting firms for a total amount not to exceed $500,000 per firm for a three-year base term with an option to exercise two one-year options to extend each agreement. This is also an action. And consent item number seven, resolution accepting 30 a Royal Seiko Storm Drain Replacement Project as complete and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion. Also action. Is there, may I have a motion to approve all three?
With approval.
Thank you, Councilwoman Papin. Thank you, Councilman Hallibur. Any discussion? Actually typically no. Call the question, please, Elaine.
Councilmember Hallibur.
Aye.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Councilmember Papin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Oliva.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
Consent calendar items five, six, seven are approved by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, and congratulations to our new members of the Culture Arts Committee, Andrea Zhu and Nicole Termini-Germain.
Hey, Mayor, if I may, real quick, just a point of clarification on 13, on item six, just so the public knows. Those are 13 shortlisted firms. Each one of those 13 that we shortlist will have to compete and 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 go through a competitive bid process. So I just wanted the public to know that. We're not hiring 13 firms. We've just shortlisted eligibility of 13 firms, so.
Thank you, City Manager. Moving on to public hearing, this is item number eight. And I'm going to say this once, consideration of one, a resolution overriding the San Mateo City County Association of Governments, San Mateo County Airport Land Use Commission's determination of inconsistency with the policies of the Comprehensive Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan for the environs of San Francisco International Airport regarding the zoning text amendment to the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan to allow with a conditional use permit, hazardous uses classified as biosafety level two. Uses in a portion of the Employment Center Light Industrial Zone located within Safety Compatibility Zone Two. And number two, a resolution adopting a text amendment to the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan to allow for a conditional use permit, hazardous uses classified as biosafety level two. Uses in a portion of the Employment Center Light Industrial Zone located within Safety Compatibility Zone Two. We'll have staff presentation, open up the public hearing, first round of council comments, then open it up for public comment, close public comment, and take action.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce our Community Development Director, Ms. Darcy Smith, for staff presentation.
I'm not sure we can hear you, Ms. Smith. City Clerk, anything we can do to help her? The presentation is on screen.
I've asked her unmute. We're just dusting off the cobwebs after being off for a month. She's on mute. Bear with us.
I've asked her to unmute, but if it doesn't work, would you like to call in, Darcy?
Tom, just so you know, we're back to I forgot what this is called, when we see everyone's faces. Gallery screen or gallery view.
I think she's relogging in, so just give her a quick moment.
I think we can hear you now, Darcy.
Yes, okay, sorry.
Excellent.
Little surge. No, it's never fun unless Zoom crashes on you. Okay, can you see this now? Here we go.
Very good.
Okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name's Darcy Smith. I'm your Community Development Director and I'll be presenting this item. And the city's planning manager, Roscoe Mata, and the project planner, Nestor Gwabara, our associate planner are also available tonight along with the city manager and city attorney. This is the final meeting in a multi-meeting process. Back in January 12, the city council adopted two resolutions to override the CCAG decision that the Millbrae Stationary Specific Plan Amendments for these biosafety level two uses in the safety zone two were inconsistent. That was focused on the TOD zone and the second resolution amending the MSASP zone. And back on July 27, when you were last in session, the council And back on July twenty-seventh, when you were last in session, the council adopted a resolution making draft findings and declaring an intent to consider. This override for a small portion of the Employment Center Light Industrial Zone that I'll show you in a minute. Again, this is a multi-step process and. On July twenty-seventh, you started the process by adopting the draft findings. On July twenty-ninth, the city issued a notice of intent to consider this override. We distributed that to the Airport Land Use Committee and the Caltrans Aeronox Division, and that started a forty-five day processing period. On August thirtieth, that thirty-day review period for those agencies closed and there were no comments received. So here we are tonight for the public hearing for consideration. Of adoption of the resolution for this override and the text amendment, which I'll step through in a minute. So again, back in January, the council overrule was made for the TOD zone that you see here in the purple, the bigger area. And the action didn't include very explicit findings related to allowing biosafety level two uses in the. Employment Center Industrial Zone, which is just that tiny sliver of blue that you see on the bottom. Which is only partially in that safety compatibility zone. So we are here tonight um to ensure that there's clarity in the record. To allow the city to do this. And. So again, this shows the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan zoning areas. And the boundaries between the different safety zones relate to SFO. And again, it's just this tiny little sliver here shown in blue. Relative to those safety zones. So just to refresh you, the this is the biosafety level chart, so you can see the increasing risk with the higher-risk microbes and the lower. Risk microbes on the bottom. And what biosafety level two includes is the clinical diagnostic and laboratory uses such as in the life science buildings that work with these indigenous. Moderate-risk agents that are already in the community, including influenza, HIV-lyme disease, and salmonella. And they're not the more dangerous, high-risk microbes such as Ebola. Smallpox or the plague, which I hope we never see in our lifetime. So tonight's action, as Mayor Schneider read, I'll just read into this record again because it's a public hearing. Um, is adoption of two different resolutions. The first is a resolution overriding the San Mateo C CAG. Airport Land Use Commission's determination of inconsistency with the policies of the Comprehensive Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. For SFO regarding the zoning text amendment to the Millbrae Stationary Specific Plan to allow with a conditional use permit hazardous uses classified as biosafety level two. In a small portion of the Employment Center Light Industrial Zone located within Safety Compatibility Zone Two. And the second resolution adopts the text amendment to the Millbrae Stationary Specific Plan to allow with a conditional use permit hazardous uses. Classified as biosafety level two. And that same portion of the Employment Center Light Industrial Zone within Safety Compatibility Zone Two. So that concludes my brief staff report, and the city team is happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Uh. Community Development Director Smith. Uh, council, any questions for the director? I don't see any. Oh, hold on. Elaine, I don't see any hands raised. Do you see anything? With that, I will, and. Darcy, I can't remember if we left this hearing opened the last time, so whether I did or didn't, I'm formally opening or reopening the public hearing. Uh, members for the public, if you have comments or questions, if you could please raise your hand, and if you're on the phone, star nine. I'll just give you a few seconds to see if some hands come up. City clerk, I'm not seeing any hands raised. Do you have anyone on the phone?
I do not.
All right, in that case, I am closing public comment. Is this when I close? I don't close the public hearing until we go for a vote, or do I close the public hearing now?
No, I would leave the public hearing open. Oh, well, if is there any comments from the council?
Okay, second go, uh, comments from council. I'm seeing no hands raised from council. Anybody? I can't see. I only see one council member. I don't see any hands raised. In that case, I am closing the public hearing and.
Move approval.
Okay. I think I heard Councilwoman Pappen and Councilman Fung um motion and second.
Uh, for both resolutions, please, just to be clear.
Both resolutions.
I'm sorry, but I couldn't hear that.
I I'm moving approval of both resolutions, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pappen. And Councilman Fung, you concur?
Yes, second on both resolution, please.
Thank you. Point of order. Does the city clerk have to read those again?
No.
I'm hearing, I'm seeing Ruben saying no. In that case, if there are no further questions, city clerk, could you call the vote?
Gladly. Councilmember Holiber.
Hi.
Councilmember Fung.
Yes.
Councilmember Pappen.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Leva.
Hi.
Mayor Snyder.
Hi.
The city, the Millbrae City Council adopted both resolution regards to public hearing item number eight. By the vote of five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, city clerk. Congratulations, Director Smith and all the staff that worked on this. All right, moving along. Agenda item, did I hear a comment? Okay, sorry. Uh, agenda item number nine. Uh, reject the four bids received for the Millbrae Recreation Center Low Voltage Systems Installation Project. Authorize a rebid and authorize the city manager to execute the construction contract. This is an action item. City manager staff, if you could give a presentation, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Ms. Jane Cow, the city's project manager for the recreation center project.
Thank you, City Manager Williams. This is uh Jane Cow. Um, and good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Member of City Council. I don't have a presentation, but I will provide a oral summary of the item. Uh, so this item before you is for the city council to adopt a resolution to re- reject all bids for the Millbrae Recreation Center Low Voltage System. Installation project, authorizing rebid of the project and also authorizing the city manager or destiny. To execute a contract in full accordance with applicable procedures and requirements up to the project contingency amount of fifteen percent of the bid price. And just to provide a quick recap, uh, so blocks design-built contract did not include low voltage system installation. Uh, but it did include installation of the infrastructure, the pathways for these systems. So the cost for this low voltage system installation project, it's budgeted outside of the design-built contract. So we have completed the design and also advertised the project back in August. Uh, two weeks ago, we received four bids. And due to a number of material irregularities in the bids, staff does not recommend moving forward with an award at this time. Therefore, we are requesting that the city council reject all bids and authorize a re-advertising of the contract. So due to construction schedule constraints, staff also recommends that the city council authorize the city manager. To execute a contract with the lowest responsive and responsible bill. Responsive bidder to expedite the procurement process. It has also come to our attention that we have another alternative to meet the construction schedule constraint. Under this alternative, alternative approach, staff may work with block and the design building to issue a sub-con- subcontract. To complete the work under applicable procedures and requirement in the design-built contract. So our intent is to um report back to the city council on on this low voltage system work at a future meeting. So that concludes my oral report. Uh, we're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cow. Uh, any questions by council?
Move approval.
Uh, hold on, Gina. Um, open for public comment. Members of public, any comments or questions? Please raise your hand. Star nine on the phone. I do see Vice Mayor Leva. I'll I'll pick you up, Vice Mayor, once I close public comment. I am not seeing any public comments, closing public comments, uh, Vice Mayor Le- uh, coming back to council comments, Vice Mayor Leva.
So what is, what is low voltage? What is, what is this? What it, what are we talking about?
Councilman Olivia, um, the low voltage system include three parts, so it includes the audio visual. So you're looking at, you know, the projectors, the televisions, uh, speakers and such. That's gonna be. Um, installed in the community room as well as classroom, senior lounge, so in all the program rooms.
So Jane, Jane, is that, is that the actual? Is that that like the plugin or is that the actual apparatus? Is it the television? Is the, is it the uh movie camera or whatever, the projector?
It's, yeah, it's gonna be the projectors, um, the TVs, including all the cabling that runs back to sort of the brain of the system, right? So there's gonna be an IT closet with um where everything connects.
Perfect. So that's, I guess, where I was going with this. If we're gonna get the, if we're gonna get the brains behind it, I think that that's totally what we need to do. But do you think maybe with the um. The donations and such for televisions and projectors and all that stuff, we might wanna hold off on that? Or is it all come together?
That's a great question. Um. I think televisions are fairly simple as a donation. Um, we would just need all the wiring in first. And um a television can essentially be plugged in, right? It's pretty simple to mount it on the walls, but I think all the other. Um, like projectors and stuff, those are designed for the 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 room specifically. In terms of size of the screen and how the projector works, so there are certainly items that we may consider donation for.
So if if I could ask if it's simple. Um, could we please add? Accept this. Motion that Gina's made, Councilmember Pappen has made, but with keeping in mind that we might get some donations for projectors and television sets. And such in the future?
Yes, I think so. Uh, City Manager Williams, do you have any uh input on that?
No, the more donations, the better. So if all the public's listening, we're ready, willing, and able.
Well, I think it's, I think it's a, I think it's a um. It's an affordable donation. That's why I was looking to, you know, to think that somebody might be able to buy a television. For the senior, yeah.
I think that's right. And and yeah, we can work that in, Vice Mayor and and the council. I I think the important thing here is to get all of the wiring. And electronics and systems in place, and that's on the critical path uh for the opening, but most certainly we can accommodate um those types of of um.
Just keep it in mind, please.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And and we'd be happy to, we would be, we'd be thrilled and happy to get those and provide recognition. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and City Manager. Councilman Holiber.
Thank you. Um, I understand that this is um pretty timely in terms of the critical path that is facing uh. The contractor block uh with with this project. Um, it's fairly unusual to have a council resolution that, you know, authorizes the award of a contract without. Council being aware of what exactly the contract is. Um, or what the amount is and based on, you know, the bids that we've received, they're sort of all over the place here. Um, do we know what is budgeted within the project budget for this uh project?
Uh, yes, Councilmember Ruben, um, we currently have six hundred fifty thousand dollar budgeted for for this work.
Okay, so if we can keep it to, you know, approximately that amount. Um, you know, I I. Take it that the city staff wouldn't approve a exorbitant contract um that goes well above that budgeted amount. Um, I also understand we may contract directly with block as opposed to doing. An RFP. Do you know when that determination would be made?
So I I think you bring up some good points, uh, council member, and and yes, I mean, we would. You know, certainly come back to the city council. Um, you know, that would be my preference also, come back for the city council for the contract and the amount. Um, I think looking at, you know, authority because of the timing. Um, right at that six hundred fifty thousand, it's good, but in any event, even to accelerate uh the timeline. I would still bring this back to the city council um and and inform the council of of um. You know, that that reasonable contract. Obviously, if we get something that's unreasonable. Um, I would put the brakes on it and come back to the city council for discussion, but I think here the um moving, well, rejecting all bids. And then and then moving forward with the alternative that Ms. Cow had just presented. Or rebidding um the contract um is 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 well-suited. And I and I and I agree with you. Um, giving a city manager an open checkbook, I would not recommend, so I will. I I hear you and will be reasonable with that and certainly bring that back to the council. I think we'll also have some time that the council would be open, and and I think this council has been great, especially how busy we've been. In in accepting special meetings, especially when there's critical path and timeline, so that could be an alternative also. That, you know, we just need really twenty-four hour notice and and we can bring that to the council and really not lose any time.
Okay, well, this is what I do for a living, review budgets, review contracts. Um. And uh, yeah, my boss would kill me if I recommended approving a contract without even knowing what the amount is, so. Um, thank you for looking into that. We we trust you to uh. Keep it within the project.
Thank you, Councilman Holiber. Um, I'm having a momentary, have I opened this up for public comment already? Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Yes, you did.
Uh, are there any further comments from council? All right, seeing none, can I have a motion and second to?
Gina already made the motion. I'll second it.
Well, she, okay. Um, all right, so we have a motion and a second. Pappen, Oliva, any further comments? City clerk, could you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Holiber.
Hi.
Councilmember for Fung.
Hi.
Councilmember Pappen.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Leva.
Hi.
Mayor Snyder.
Hi.
Existing business number nine is passed by the vote of five to zero.
Thank you, city clerk, and good luck to staff. All right, moving into new business, we have item number ten, discussion and guidance on formation of a cultural. Inclusion and Equity Commission or Committee, and this is an action item. Staff, do you have a presentation for us?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor, um, and members of the city council, again, Tom Williams, City Manager. I don't have a PowerPoint, but just a a quick uh verbal presentation here. I think we all, you know, uh, remember the George George Floyd tragedy. And uh, the outcome of the social inequities that that have been identified. Uh, as a result of that tragedy and certainly through the last year and a half and the pandemic for COVID nineteen. And there's been, you know, much discussion publicly about the possible needs and benefits of approving our racial and social inequities that do exist in our society. On the nationwide level, all the way to, you know, our local level here at the city of Millbrae. Um, several municipalities actually throughout San Mateo County. Um, have either uh adopted or established um commissions or committees to look into this. Um, some of the larger cities like the city of Oakland actually created a new position recently uh within their municipal organization to to address these. Uh, issues and and approve upon the situation. So pursuant to city council protocols, uh, as you may recall, um, on July thirteenth, it was Councilmember Pappen. That had asked this item to be placed on the agenda through the acknowledgement, again, through the protocols of of the mayor, of Mayor Snyder. Uh, to place this item on the agenda uh for discussion and direction on the possible formation. Of a new city commission or committee um that would advance racial and social equity. Uh, throughout the city and actually throughout the region. So the staff report, I don't want to reiterate what's in the staff report. I I provided some some ideas um for basis of a discussion. And what this, uh, you know, could possibly look at, look like, or steps to move forward. So, Mayor, I would um be happy to answer any questions or help with the discussion amongst the council members.
Uh, thank you, City Manager. Let's open it up to council for any questions or comments, and then for public comment. I am amazed I am not seeing a city council member raise their hand. Okay, I think they want to hear from the public. Uh, members of the public. Uh. Uh, if you could please raise your hand, it's gonna give me an idea if we can stay at three minutes or move to two minutes on this very critical issue. I had advanced warning that we'd have at least five of you. I see three. Um, with that, and with respect, I'm gonna keep it at three minutes, and Ms. Dawn Lee, welcome back to city council. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Schneider. Um, good to see all the council people and so many people from the community here tonight. Thank you so much for giving me a couple moments to talk about my enthusiastic support for the establishment of the um Social Equity Commission. Uh, when I moved to Millbrae. Uh, when I moved to Millbrae, um, in 2010, one of the things that drew me to the city was, in fact, the uh, large number of Asian and Asian Americans, as well as, uh, the diversity of Millbrae. The proximity of Millbrae to the city would give me, um, also access to, um, cultural diversity. And as I started getting involved in, uh, the school district, uh, my son is in Millbrae schools, and then also getting to know the neighbors. One of the things that I, uh, began to experience is, I think, um, people started talking to me about their experiences in Millbrae as, um, uh, people of color, um, Asian Americans were talking to me as well. Once they found out that my work, my professional work and my background in doing, um, equity and inclusion work, uh, was something that, uh, they were very, very interested in learning more about. And, and they, they found, um, I think, uh, a, a neighbor who would be open and willing to talk to them about these issues. What was interesting, I found also is that while Millbrae really feels inclusive to some people, not all residents, not all employees and visitors, um, do feel that way. And so when I, um, uh, found out that, um, um, Ms. Pappan, uh, suggested this idea and, uh, several folks at the Millbrae, um, Anti-Racist Coalition also suggested this idea, I was absolutely enthusiastic about this. Uh, because this, um, Social Equity Commission provides a clear plan of action to help Millbrae fulfill, uh, one of the key pieces of its mission. And, uh, just to remind everybody, right, the mission statement that was adopted includes embracing cultural diversity in a safe environment. And, uh, this, uh, proposal has clear steps and a clear plan to not only advise, um, affect policy change to influence education, um, gives us an opportunity to write grant applications and also think about important issues such as policing and housing. It gives opportunity for our community, our neighbors, our, um, city organizations to work together towards actual change. This is a, a commission that I support and it's very close to my heart. And, um, and I, as a, as a member of the community, I just want to say, um, that I, I support this idea wholeheartedly. Thank you for giving me some time to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Ms. Chen.
Good evening, everybody, Mayor Ann, council members. Um, I've been a resident in Millbrae with my family for more than 10 years. And what has always been important to me as a parent is that the community that we live in feels welcoming and safe and that my kids, my husband and I feel connected to my neighbors and that I live in a place that I can be proud to call home. Um, I grew up as one of the only Asians in my small town in New Jersey. And despite the fact that I had many racial slurs and jokes, uh, slung at me for years, ultimately, I found a group of friends that made me feel welcome, accepted and part of my community and what I now would consider as family. Um, by being connected and feeling included, I became an active member of my computer community and gave back what I received in return. Um, you know, I seek out the same type of openness, inclusivity, and acceptance in Millbrae for my kids. And I want to thank the council and the city for supporting so many cultural groups, um, and Millbrae Arc. We have taken great strides as a community to try and welcome others. And I applaud the effort to form a Cultural Inclusion and Equity Commission. And I asked the council to vote yes in support of it. Um, I believe that strong communities are built when members of the community feel a sense of connection and have a vested interest in seeing the community succeed. But the strongest communities are built when all members of the community feel connected and when they live in a place that works for all, not just some. And Millbrae, like much of America, has changed dramatically, even in the past 12 years that I have lived here. We have so many cultures and ethnic groups living here now that you can walk, you can't really walk a few downtown blocks without hearing more foreign languages than English. And while the number of ethnic and cultural groups has grown rapidly here in Millbrae, representation across the council, our committees, and many of our community organizations has not caught up with this rapid change. And many of our committees and commissions do not look like the rest of our town. And there are some cultural groups that are rarely heard from. Therefore, not everyone's voices are being heard or represented. And I doubt it is because they have nothing to say. We are ignoring a huge percentage of people living here. That can be amazing neighbors, friends, community members that you may someday consider family. So having this new Cultural and Equity Inclusion Committee is a fantastic step toward proactively and consciously building more inclusivity into our community, welcoming members and making Millbrae safer and stronger together. It's all about making Millbrae proud, and I hope you will all vote yes to support this new committee.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. Uh, Ms. Katie Nolan-Stivoe.
Thank you, council members and Mayor Schneider. I want to build on the comments from Karen and Dawn here and wholeheartedly support this committee. And you may wonder, why is some white lady so enthused about social equity? And honestly, it's because the only way that we can be a better committee is to be able to harness the talents and thoughts and contributions of every person living in this city. And while I think we have made strides in the past year, even in the pandemic, between the town halls that were put on by the city and the ones where we partnered with Millbrae Arc, with the banners, with all the proclamations, we've heard here tonight how important it is that we reach out to community members who may not look like us because these times are very isolating. And especially with all of the news these days, it's even more important for us to be able to draw on the talents of everyone. And I think those of us who are active in next door and who talk to our neighbors and who read the papers realize that it's not enough to have nice banners and to sponsor marches and chalk-ins because the reality is there's really a disconnect in our community about how we came to be this community, how it is that housing looks the way it is, how our schools look the way it is. And what I'm so proud about this commission is this commission is really going the next step to try and investigate these and make recommendations that will be concrete, to engage the community more in these issues and actually make sure that the power structures that run our community, that keep it together, do so intentionally and are really designed and thinking proactively about how we can bring everyone in and make sure that everyone feels like family, that the kids are not having the experiences that Karen had, that we don't rely on Dawn to be the one to talk to the neighbors because she looks like them or they feel like they trust her, that they can go to anyone on the council, anyone in the schools, anyone in city hall, and feel like their voice is heard. So I wholeheartedly endorse this and hope that the council will support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Michael Kelly, Mr. Kelly.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, distinguished city council and everyone present here. Uh, very much appreciate the opportunity to share some perspective, um, and loved what we, I just heard from Dawn, Karen, and, uh, and Katie. A brief history, I moved to Millbrae in 93 from Seattle, where I grew up and went to school. Our neighborhood, our high school was very, it was 15% white, 40% Asian, 30% black, and the rest Hispanic and Pacific Islander. That's what I thought the world was. Um, moved away, found out it's a lot different than that. Love being in Millbrae. Also love what the city of Millbrae has done. Uh, just this last, uh, Labor Day weekend, uh, the Art and Wine Festival, the Chamber of Commerce, the city of Millbrae were so gracious, they allowed the Millbrae Anti-Racist Coalition to set up a full booth, all the support, like the other organizations here. And I and other members of ARC, the Anti-Racist Coalition, um, staffed that booth. And what I heard and what I learned there really affected me. It drove home a very important, um, realization. Literally, half of the, and we had 30 or 40 people sign up to become members of ARC. But of the 100-plus that stopped by to have conversations, half of the people, um, from, uh, you know, the festival said there isn't racism in Millbrae. And the other half said, I experience racism almost every day. So there is a lot to learn. There's a lot of dialogue to have, a lot of conversations. Some of them are going to be, they're going to be tough and they're going to be challenging. And it's, you know, change is never easy. But, um, you know, the opportunity to form a commission, something that can actually affect some influence around policy change and making Millbrae more inclusive, more equitable for everybody that's here, I think is, is a fantastic opportunity. Had the good fortune to work with, um, the city staff. Uh, we combined with the city of Millbrae and, and ARC. We applied for a, a sizable grant from the Chan Zuckerberg Institute. And leveraging the recognition that ARC and the city of Millbrae got at a national level from the National League of Cities. Millbrae came in second place in the entire country for every city up to 50,000 population. We're, we're batting way, we're punching way over our weight class here. We're 23,000, second place in the entire US just from what ARC and the city had done in one year since ARC was formed. So yes, please, uh, uh, approve this equity commission and allow us to effect some positive change. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mr. Narcisse. Get him unmuted.
Mr. Narcisse, um, you will have to start over. You're not unmuted. Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Can you start the clock, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Hi again, Carl Narcisse. I've been living in Millbrae for the past two years and, you know, I've lived all over the Bay Area. I'm originally from the East Coast, but I've lived in San Francisco, Oakland, even parts of the South Bay. Uh, my wife and I, who is of Chinese-American descent, uh, we, we are here, we've been here for the past two years, where we've raised our three children. And so, you know, we're considering, we do consider Millbrae home and we want to be able to build, uh, you know, a long-term life here in this community. And so when thinking about that, we want to make sure, we want to see what we can do in order to foster, you know, a community where they are accepted and where myself, as a, as a black man, uh, feel accepted, uh, in this community. And so, you know, I know that I, I moved here in 2019 and I know there was a, you know, the fateful tragedy of Chinadu Okobi, um, you know, along El Camino, where he was tased by, by police officers. Uh, and so like, you know, as a black man, you know, something that I think about, you know, for my own personal safety, uh, for my children who currently go to daycare and preschool in this town and potentially, you know, will be going to elementary schools and high schools. You know, I think about their safety and their well-being and for my, for my wife. Uh, and so for our family and for, I'm sure that other families here have the same sentiment. And so I think that this commission is very much needed. Uh, I vote for yes for this, and I think it's just very much needed throughout our community, our schools, uh, various municipalities, it's a changing demographic within the town. Uh, and, you know, I know a lot of people are trying to live in this town. It's very competitive as far as housing. And so when we think about the overall community, I think it's important to have this commission, uh, to, to ensure that we are kind of, I guess, promoting the idea of anti-racism within Millbrae and more of inclusivity. So I think that this commission is very much needed. And yes, I'm all in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Narcisse. I don't see any other hands. Last call, if members of the public would like to comment. I am not seeing any city clerk. Do you have anyone on the phone?
I believe I saw Becky M. waving, but I'm not sure if she still wants to speak.
I'm sorry, I want to actually speak on the next topic, please.
Okay, thank you.
I looked for you earlier, too. All right, with that, I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to city council for a question, comments. Counsel? Uh, Councilwoman Pappan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to all the speakers. Uh, it is amazing what our group of residents has done to bring people together. And it's a beautiful thing. Uh, by understanding each other and communicating with one another, I think it makes us a much stronger city. So my compliments to ARC, um, and everybody moving forward. I do think that this is a prime opportunity to expand, as someone mentioned, getting grants and really taking this to the next level. Um, the sheriff's department has, we've met with the captain on this part and having them to be a part of this, I think is very, very important as well. So I, I mean, I hope that we can give this an opportunity to really shine further. And I want to compliment our community and everyone here. This is really about bringing people together. So I hope that we can pursue this this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pappan. Uh, Councilman Holber.
Hey, thank you, um, to all the speakers and to, um, Anti-Racist Coalition for bringing this, uh, forward and bringing forward many of these important issues, uh, to the city. I'm also thankful to the Councilwoman Pappan, uh, for, uh, suggesting this to the council. I think, uh, with some of the plans outlined in the staff report, um, for a potential, um, committee or commission, I think would be, would make sense for the city. Um, at this point, I think it would probably, in, in my opinion, be best to establish an ad hoc committee to look into, um, potential recommendations, um, for the city, um, regarding, uh, cultural equity inclusion, um, as opposed to, um, a permanent, um, committee or commission at this time. I, I don't think we quite have the, the role, um, the details of the role for that at this point. So I think probably an ad hoc committee would be, uh, preferable. And, um, I think some of the stakeholders that were identified in this, um, staff report would be, uh, appropriate to include, uh, as part of that committee. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Holibur. Vice Mayor Oliva.
Oh, uh, Councilmember Holibur, you kind of took the words right out of my mouth. But I, I'll say to the group, you know, thank you for bringing this to our attention and being the leaders in this for us. Uh, Councilmember Pappan, thank you for putting this to our attention as well. I mean, we have many groups that, to, to Councilmember, uh, Holibur's remarks, we have many groups that are working in this direction. Um, but it would be really amazing if Millbrae could put an ad hoc committee together so we could be part of it and bring everybody together and let them know how, how, um, well, the voices here are very strong. So I think that, that just says it all. We need to, uh, go forward with whatever direction the council decides to do tonight. But I am full support of, um, all the speakers and I'm very grateful for all the speakers coming forward and bringing this to everybody's attention. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm going to, I haven't seen Councilman Fung yet, but I'm going to add a few points. I, I like the staff report, but it missed a huge component of equity. And, and it, and by Millbrae not being identified as an equity community, we are losing out on not just grant money, but the ability to take care of our residents' health. And by that, I mean environmental justice. We are not considered an equity community. We're not even considered. It's very odd that we're a minority-majority community, but we're not considered in the funding mechanisms that way. And I say that based on my experience on the county bike pedestrian committee. I base that as a commissioner on the state recycling committee. And I base that on over 35 years of working in the environmental field. And also for being on SFO Noise Roundtable, where I have gone back and read 20 years of old EIRs, more going back, where every time SFO has expanded, it has impacted our neighborhoods. And it's impacted it not just by noise, but by air pollution. So if you look at Marina Vista neighborhood, when they built the international terminal, when they built the new addition to the international terminal, and then when they built the extension to Terminal One, all of those gates were moved hundreds of yards away from, from Marina Vista. And at the same time, Caltrain expanded 101 and took away more trees. That means that noise and that air pollution immediately hits that neighborhood. And if you cannot get a good night's sleep, you cannot do well in school, you cannot do well at work, and you have a greater chance of diabetes, heart attacks, et cetera. That's just one of our neighborhoods, because we're not considered an equity community because of the house values, the basic house values by census, that we don't qualify for assistance. The only way to get assistance through the National Environmental Protection Act is if we dedicate a couple of our neighborhoods or all, all of our neighborhoods qualify as historic neighborhoods, that is the one tool to try to get these polluting That is the one tool to try to get these polluting industries to protect our neighbors. So, I I I would prefer a commission, to be honest, because a commission has the power perceived within grant-writing worlds to get the grant money for the city. I would prefer it not being an ad hoc, because we have a lot of work to do within our own county, within the transportation agencies, who for decades have basically protected other cities at our expense. And it's tough, because noise never really gets talked about. Air pollution, believe it or not, our California Air Board doesn't handle transportation. It comes from the EPA or it comes from the FAA, and they have done nothing to protect our people. So, I hope that this commission, I hope this becomes a commission. I'm really glad that it isn't before us today. If ad hoc is the best we can get, then I hope that the commission will will work hard on why this should be a permanent commission. And there is a great deal of work to go through, not just obviously for equity bullying, diversity issues, but environmental justice. And I need your help. Thank you. Councilman Fung.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to thank everyone in Anti-Racist Coalition for bringing this forward. Great discussion today. Thank you for all the speakers. I also like to thank Councilman Pappan for bringing this to the attention of the council. As an Asian-American elected, I think, you know, this is an important, this is an important step, right? You know, we're living in jurisdictions of about 22,500 people, where nearly half, actually, maybe even more than half at this point, of our populations are identify themselves as Asian-Americans. And so, you know, with that said, there's a lot of work to do. And I'm grateful that, you know, ARC and all the members who wanted to join this this committee and all the things that you have done in the past, and so much work still needs to be done. And so, you know, in terms of the actual work, I see several areas of a real interesting area that this committee can participate in, and your input would be valuable. You know, one of them is housing. The other is transportation, as well as education. You know, as a member of the CCAT legislative committee, we discuss on a regular basis on how to bring equity into our transportation policies, our housing policies. And this is where this organization could be extremely valuable with your input and your experience and your insight. And so, I think, you know, forming an ad hoc committee and, you know, bringing in all the experts that, you know, who has been, you know, working hard in bringing more equitable policy into our society would be extremely valuable. And I think this is where, you know, this ad hoc committee would be able to identify these tasks, identify these areas of improvement that will continue to improve and and influence our life to be more equitable, more diverse, and more fair for everyone. So, you know, I think this is the direction I would support we go. And I hope that, you know, with this ad hoc committee, we can make some meaningful changes to see to it. We continue to enhance our diversity and bring more equity in our future policies.
Thank you, Councilman Fung. So, if I'm reading the council, but I'm wondering if Councilwoman Pappan would like to do a rebuttal? If not, I don't want to put you on the spot.
No, no, no. I would like to discuss this with my colleagues. I I think there's a big distinction between establishing a committee and ad hoc. And I think the emphasis about bringing this forward as a committee is really based on the possibility of grant applications. And I think that that becomes problematic if it's only an ad hoc committee. Now, I I will point out, we've had committees before that, you know, we we can make committees and we can do away with committees. I have extremely high hopes for this committee. And, you know, I kind of get impatient. So, yeah, I like to go kind of, let's do this right. Let's go ahead with a a committee at this point in time. And all of our committees are ever-evolving. Councilmember Holber and I have interviewed some amazing people in this last cycle and really have encouraged committee members to, you know, make the committee something spectacular in whatever they do. They've taken the time to participate. So, I hope that my colleagues would see that this is a really important opportunity. And I think we should take it to the fullest extent instead of kind of just doing it partway. So, I would ask that we pursue the committee aspect, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pappan. Vice Mayor Oliva.
Councilmember Pappan, I respectfully disagree. I agree with the fact that it is an most important formation of a committee. But I think there's a process and there's and there's a strategic tactic to putting a very strong committee together. And I want nothing more than this to succeed. And I think that if we have an ad hoc committee where we can engage outside just the city that we have, the city of Millbrae or the city council, I think that it'll give them strength and a running path to fly much stronger. And it is a structure by which any group, I mean, look what they've done. They have, they've created a voice that is very loud in our community. They've gotten our attention. They've gotten our residents' attention. I think that we should let them run with it. We should, we should support something where we can give them strength to run with community members outside of Millbrae, to build the strength of something that we will create as a, for them. This is not to to say it's just an ad hoc committee. I'm giving, I I want to give them the structure, the foundation. I think it's really important to have a strong foundation. And that is the intent of an ad hoc committee.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. City Attorney Casman, just for the public and perhaps for my sake, can you define what an ad hoc city government committee is? To me, it's temporary. That, but that's, I could be wrong.
Well, yes. Well, under, well, under the Brown Act, an ad hoc committee must be temporary and have a very limited jurisdiction. I mean, the the idea, I I, i- if you want this, is this a a committee that's going to be created by the council? If it's created by the council, it would be subject to the Brown Act, and you can make it whatever you want. And you can call it whatever you want. I think the difference with a commission, our commissions historically have been bodies that are built into our municipal code. So, we have, you know, a limited number of commissions. We we have the the Planning Commission, which also gets its power from state law. And we have the Community Preservation Commission. We have the Parks and Recreation Commission. We have the Sister City Commission. And I.
We actually defrocked our one environmental commission. But, yeah, we we dumped them from commission down to committee.
So, yeah. So, when they're commissions, they are, I mean, if you're looking at a hierarchy in terms of formality, those are built into our municipal code. And then we create committees. The council creates committees from time to time by resolution. And, you know, resolutions are a less formal mode of governance. They're easier to amend. They don't require readings, et cetera. So, really, it's it's kind of up to the council what you want to do. If it is created, if you create something formally, it would be subject to the Brown Act.
Okay. And would, would a committee, I mean, looking at how South San Francisco has formed theirs and looking at Redwood City and San Mateo, trying to figure out how they're putting it together to get a variety of voices, would a committee, so I understand that we're probably not ready for a commission yet, which would be my druthers, but a committee makes sense to me. Would they be able to have voting representation from, like, the county health department? Or would that be, it would have to be a Millbrae resident who works for the county health department. How would that work?
So, I think if you were establishing a committee, you would be setting the rules as to who sits on that committee.
Okay. So, a committee could have a diversity of representation, including critical knowledge-based people from outside the city. Okay. I know I cut before Councilman Holber. I just wanted to make sure. It looks to me, from my reading of council members, they don't see how much work this group could do. Therefore, create an ad hoc committee whose main task would be to study just what would this committee do in the future?
A mission and a vision. They need a mission and a vision.
Well, but once they be, well, none of our committees necessarily have mission visions. I mean, maybe planning and parking wreck.
They all do. They all do.
Okay. Well, that's once they're formed as a committee, but as an ad hoc?
Yeah, that's, at ad hoc, to me, Joan, is a working group. It's a working group towards, we're giving them a foundation. We're putting, we're organizing, we're allowing them to organize as part of our group.
That's fine. I mean, you certainly could do it. But I just want you to understand, if it's being done by formal action of this board, it it becomes.
A committee.
That would be open to the, you can call it whatever you want. I mean, and it it can have the mission of whatever it is. But once it's formal action of this council as a legislative body, it becomes subject to the Brown Act, which I don't think is anything we should shy away from. It's a little more work for our city clerk. But you would notice meetings and, you know, people in the community could come and and listen and join in on the meetings.
But if it's ad hoc, it has a temporary lifespan, whatever that, and we would set the temporary lifespan?
If you set the rules, yes.
For an ad hoc, but it's temporary. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, City Attorney Casman. Mr. Holber.
Thank you. And I appreciate all of those comments. I believe that was similar to the model that was established in South San Francisco, where they had established an ad hoc committee that worked for about one year or so and came up with a list of specific recommendations for council to consider. So, I think having this be an ad hoc committee, I think, would be a little bit more focused in terms of coming up with those recommendations. Those recommendations could potentially include, including a permanent committee or commission. But, you know, at this time, I think that's probably the best way to do it. I think it's also important, as mentioned in the staff report, to include some of the, because there's so many different stakeholders that are involved in this. So, I think by doing an ad hoc committee, you would be able to include different representatives, both from within Millbrae, from other, from other government agencies as well. We could even include a representative from Anti-Racist Coalition. We can include representatives from the Millbrae Cultural Committee or other committees that have been formed, other community groups of Millbrae. I also appreciate the comment about designating certain areas of Millbrae as historic preservation zones. As I see it, that's more of a zoning planning issue, more so than an equity and inclusion issue. And I think that could be identified through the general plan update that we have going on. We already have a Planning Commission that would have a a voice in in that. So, I definitely recommend bringing that up through those channels.
Thank you, Councilman Holber. I I agree with that. Sadly, if you look at the President Biden's $3.5 trillion infrastructure plan, 40% of that money is going to go to equity communities. If you look at the governor's plan, not, and it crosses multiple specialty areas, a bulk of that money is going to communities that are recognized as equity. And I will say that I have a mayor of it, of an equity, under 50,000, but also an entitled city. So, they get some additional funding that we do not get. Because California uses this formula that I think, because it doesn't include noise and it doesn't include federal air pollution issues, we're being left out. And, yeah, we can wait for the general plan, which is what the city manager has told me. But I'm the one representing us at SFO Roundtable. And I will tell you, they threw Millbrae under the bus for this year so that they could add the city of Palo Alto to the roundtable, because they have such horrible noise down there. So, it has been extremely frustrating not being able to protect our people. But I, okay, if it's an ad hoc committee, but it is, preservation just gives us one tool within NEPA.
That's been, it's been a challenge. It's been a challenge for the parks grants as well. I know that we've applied for a number of grants, I think through Prop 68. And we don't receive any of them because we're too wealthy. So, I I don't see how a committee would be able to, or a committee or commission would be able to lower Millbrae's income to a point where.
You guys, can we please stay on, can we please stay on subject here?
This is on subject, Vice Mayor. Sorry, overruled. I I hear you, Vice, Councilman Holber, except I have been told that we might be able to change CalEPA's way of looking at equity. And it would just be nice to have a group that's also working on it, ad hoc or committee. If they can look at that, we can bring services to our people. Any further comments?
Yes, please.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Pappan.
To bring this back, I need to know here if there's a distinction. If you have an ad hoc committee, I mean, the purpose of bringing this forward here is so that we could apply for grants and expand the good work that's been done here. Can, if this is, as it seems to be leaning, an ad hoc committee, would that prevent us, or this group, excuse me, from expanding all the wonderful work that's being done here? Can someone answer that question for me, please? And we might have to go to the public to get that answer, because I'm, I don't know. And the committee report's very confusing.
Well, I I can, having experience and knowledge with the grant process, I think an an ad hoc committee, that if we use that and leverage that during the grant application that may occur during the, you know, there's something called an open notice of funding availability, that, yes, I think we could use the partnership and the formation of an ad hoc committee for that purpose. I I think that there's, and I do think that there's merit, you know, either way. And I think of, as I understand the discussion, as I'm interpreting it, is form an ad hoc committee, have them go to work, have the mission, vision, values, objectives, tasks, work programs, short term, midterm, long term, bring that back to the city council, right, for review and consideration, adoption. And part of that could be, hey, to further implement this, we do need to set up the permanent commission, amend the zoning, amend the municipal code, establish the permanent commission. And, you know, one of the things that has been discussed and that's in the staff report is bringing in our regional partners, right? I mean, one of the things is, you know, the relationship with the sheriff, relationship with our public safety folks. And I think it's important that we reach out to them to to come join us and be part of that solution and be part of our community through this group. So, that's kind of what I'm in hearing.
Okay. And I think this committee has already shown that capability. So, that's that's a given there. My colleagues, we're not going to change our population overnight. You know, I think we're getting off topic here. I think this is an important issue here. We need to move forward. You know, it doesn't sound like we have votes to just go forward with a committee. So, if we can go forward with an ad hoc committee that's going to come back to us, I think that will happen very quickly, because I have great faith in, that's why I brought this forward. So, if that seems to be the issue here, I'll let another council member make that. But I I guarantee we'll be back here. And I hope that we will be making this a full committee at some future time. So.
I'll make that motion, Councilmember Pappan, and I will hope to be back here with you.
Thank you. I'll second it then.
Thank you. Question before, if this is a motion to create an ad hoc committee, who then appoints people to the ad hoc committee, or does that, too, have to come back to us? Or at least the the functional areas that would be on the ad hoc committee?
As our city attorney said, it is the city council. It's the city council's prerogative. We we provided, just just for discussion purposes, some recommendations of what the committee could look like if the council is agreeable to that. I also heard, you know, specifically, reach out to ARC, reach out to MCC. You know, we could, we could add that. That's on, that's on page three of three of the staff report. So, it's, you know, the prerogative of of the council. But, yeah, I I think that that's a good idea.
With with a motion, can we possibly put an a mo, a a motion for a subcommittee for the ad hoc committee from city council? Can we appoint two? From city council, can we appoint two, uh, city council members here tonight?
I appreciate that, Vice Mayor, but I'm wondering if the list, every, all of us and the public have seen the list that the city manager. Put into the staff report, it is lacking one area, and that's someone speaking for environmental justice, although it does have health. But health is not the same as environmental justice. If if the motion maker in second would agree to look for someone who could represent the environmental justice community.
Well, I think you'd be perfect, I think you'd be perfect at that, Mayor.
Yeah, actually, I like Vice Mayor Leva's suggestion of a subcommittee to maybe formalize this a little bit more, I think this is. More conceptual at this point, um, from the city manager.
That would mean bringing it back on September twenty third, is that our meeting?
Well, we, we can vote on a subcommittee.
Twenty eight.
We can vote on a subcommittee for an ad hoc committee tonight.
And so right now, the motion is to create an ad hoc committee. Uh, motion in second, do we want to take care of that right now and then talk about how to pick people who will go on the committee?
I could amend my emotion if you'll get a friendly amendment here, Gina. I'll, I'll make a motion to create an ad hoc committee by two subcommittee members of our city council.
Well, may, may I just, just point a clarification here, and maybe our city attorney can win. I I think that this is an ad hoc subcommittee of the city council. And that's, that's the way I think properly.
Yeah, that makes sense. That, I'll take the amendment. Will you accept, Gina? So we have to, we have to, we have to nominate, once this is accepted, we'll nominate. Two of the members here tonight.
I also have a question.
I wonder why.
I think, I think the motion second is still thinking, though.
I like it from the clerk, what's your question?
Okay, go ahead.
My, the question is, like, based on page, um, three. The, there are two members of the city council who would be part of this ad hoc, sub, ad hoc committee, so I was wondering. It's totally separate than those two members, that.
Yeah, just, just point a clarif- yeah, I think we're talking about two different things. I think we're talking about, you know, because the recommendation is to add two members of the city council to the committee. This is formation of a subcommittee of the city, an ad hoc subcommittee of the city council, to further explore the makeup. Of what a committee could be, whether it's a, whether it's an ad hoc committee, or whether it's a permanent committee or commission. And bring that back with a recommendation of the city council.
That's my motion.
We're talking about two different things, yeah.
I think the direction of this plan is an ad hoc committee and not a permanent.
Yeah, but, but, but for city managers, what city manager just stated, let's pick two of us for a subcommittee to decipher.
Okay. Hold on, hold on, hold on, before we have discussion, we still have a a friendly amendment, does the seconder have a comment? I'm sorry, Councilman Fung, point of order, we just got to go by order here.
Second, I'm not willing to second at this point, the discussion's still going on.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman Fung.
Just want to make sure that, uh, to get some clarifications on this, the, at the subcommittee. To form the ad hoc committee, uh, will bring. The recommendations of all the members back to the council for approval, is that correct?
That's how I understand it, Councilman.
Yeah, that's the motion.
Okay, just want to make sure that.
But we don't have a second.
I'll second that.
Um, can we do it that way? City Attorney, City Clerk, we had a motion and a second, then we had a friendly amendment. Um, but the seconder does not approve, help me with Robert.
You have a new motion to just.
You have a, a new motion and a new seconder.
Do we have to vote on the first one before moving to the second?
No, it, uh, the seconder removed her second, so you didn't have a motion.
Okay. Um. All right, so we have a motion on the floor. It's not even nine o'clock yet, but we have been meeting since six o'clock. Should we vote on this or decide who the two council members will be on this? Ad hoc or this council subcommittee that will work on the membership of the ad hoc committee? What is the preference?
Vote on this first.
Okay, um. A city clerk, if you are clear on the motion, let's, if there's no further discussion on the second motion and amend, and second. Um, please call a vote.
Okay, I think I have the understanding of it, so I just got to read it out really quickly before I call, um, for a vote, please. Uh, the city council directs staff to move forward with a council subcommittee to work on the makeup of the formation of the cultural inclusion and equity ad hoc committee. Is that correct? All right, thank you.
Yeah, it's up, good, okay, didn't hear it.
Um, so Councilmember Holliver.
Hi.
Councilmember Fung.
Hi.
Councilmember Pappan.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Leva.
Hi.
Mayor Snyder.
Hi.
Okay, the city council directs staff to move forward with a council subcommittee to work on the makeup of the formation of a cultural inclusion and equity ad hoc subcommittee by vote of five to zero.
Okay, if with Gina, with Councilwoman Pappan's. Permission, I would like to nominate her and myself to be the council subcommittee on this.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
So, um, ma'am, Madam Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, since this, um, this subcommittee is chartered to. Make recommendations to the council with regards to equity and diversity, uh, forming an ad hoc committee. Uh, I would also like to, uh, volunteer for that subcommittee.
All right, I'll step down and, um, can understand the need for both, um, for a range of diversity on that, that's fine. I just want to keep this moving, and you're going to be working on a short turnaround time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Is there any further discussion? All right, um, if we could call the vote, please.
I'm so sorry, I was taking notes.
Uh, the motion is to appoint Gina, uh, Councilwoman Pappan and Councilman Fung. To the ad, as the council subcommittee to review the makeup of the ad hoc.
Okay, who made the motion, I'm sorry?
Um, I did, and seconded by Vice Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, Councilmember Holliver.
Hi.
Councilmember Fung.
Hi.
Councilmember Pappan.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Aliva.
Hi.
Mayor Snyder.
Hi.
The city council appointed Councilmember Pappan and Councilmember Fung as the cul- as the council cultural inclusion equity subcommittee members. By, by, by a vote of five to zero.
Excellent. Thank you to the public who have spoken tonight and all the work that. Our, our very diverse community has done. It may not have been everything that Councilwoman Pappan and I might have seen. But government is, and tonight really does feel like we made some sausage here, but now go forth and do good work. And congratulations, this is a big step for us. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item. Is agenda item number eleven, consider a citywide mandate on proof of COVID nineteen vaccination. Prior to entering any indoor or outdoor dining, fitness and entertainment venues within the city of Millbrae. This is an action item, and I am not sure if Councilman Fung is giving the. A presentation or staff is, so it is in your hands.
Well, may, just real quick, um, just, just quick introduction, this is very much like the previous item. That, uh, uh, any member of the city council can request an item placed on the agenda for discussion and direction. And so at the request of Councilmember Fung, um, this item was requested and placed on the agenda, uh, for discussion, and. With that, I'd, I'd be happy to either answer any questions of the council or hand it over to Councilmember Fung, uh, for further, uh, discussion.
Councilman Fung.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, so, um, you know, I was, um, in this. A number of our community members and some of the local businesses, um, you know. In discussions with them, you know, a lot of our seniors and a lot of young families, as you well know, in our city, uh, of about twenty two thousand five hundred people strong. Uh, we have a lot of young families, uh, with young children, as well as a lot of seniors. And quite a lot of them are still very nervous about, you know, the coronavirus situations, especially the Delta. And, uh, and as we also well know, you know, the children, they're under the age of twelve. Currently are unable to vaccinate because the vaccines are not being approved for their use yet, so they're unable to get the protection from the vaccine. Uh, and a number of our seniors, you know, some of them, you know, who have long-term health issues. Are really concerned about, you know, coming out into a get mask gathering and, uh, and dining in our restaurants. Uh, because they're afraid that, you know, the people that are sitting next to may or may not be vaccinated. So, you know, in light of that, you know, um, I'm trying to bring this topic to the discussion among the council members. Uh, to enact the mandate, um, to prove vaccinations. Prior to entering any indoor and outdoor dining and fitness, entertainment venue, as well as personal, uh, service businesses. Namely, would be spa, um, nail salon, hair salon, um, massages, acupuncture. Places of like, uh, places such as this, uh, it would not, um, limit the, um, entering places such as shopping. Uh, like a seven eleven or grocery shopping, for example, like Trader Joe, um, site where it would not restrict entering these businesses. Uh, but places where you would linger for a, a quite, um, lengthy time, where face masks may not necessarily be, um. Effective in those circumstances, where this person, you know, close personal contact. Uh, and and this really is about, you know, protecting those, um, uh, people's health. And protecting those who, you know, cannot protect themselves with the vaccine at the moment. Uh, especially children from zero to twelve, and those who have, might have long-term health issues, who are feeling unsafe around those who may or may not be vaccinated. Um, and it also is an important mandate that will help protect the businesses from facing when we shut down again. Um, and I think, you know, the vaccination really is our way out of this pandemic, and this is the only way for us to be safe together again. So, you know, I'm hoping that, uh, this would continue to encourage, um, our populations to, um, to seek vaccination. We're very fortunate that over ninety two percent of our population in Millbrae, as well as our county, is already vaccinated. So, you know, we still have a little bit of ways to go, and I'm hoping that this will continue to encourage everyone to vaccinate as quickly as possible. Um, and throughout my discussion with many restaurant owners and and some of the spa, as well as salon workers. Um, I was, I was able to convince our largest restaurant by seating population, uh, the Hong Kong Flower Lounge. Saw the importance, uh, and the need of this mandate and to keep our economy from shutting down again. Uh, and keep their service workers safe, and most importantly, restoring the confidence of their dining customers, um, that they're enthusiastically supporting this mandate. Um, now, I also spoken to a lot of people about the outdoor element of it. And I think the importance is that, uh, we must protect our neighbors' young children. Um, our neighbors', you know, seniors, and, um, you know. The same way as, you know, whether or not they're dining indoor or outdoor in our city. And and whether or not they're dining four feet away from the other patron or six feet away. Uh, we, you know, we need to find ways to restore their confidence, and, uh, and we need, it's really time for us to take bold and decisive action. To protect those who are not eligible to be protected by our vaccine. You know, nobody should be afraid to dine and entertain in our city. Um, you know, in terms of addressing the enforcement issues, you know. I think people want to put this pandemic behind all of us, we really do. I mean, this mandate is not about penalizing anyone or putting any pressure on any local businesses. It is about being an advocate to our people, that it's time for everyone to vaccinate as quickly as possible, because this is the responsible thing to do. And, and I truly believe that this is our way out of this pandemic, and, you know, our entire city needs to come together. And commit to protecting everyone's health. And I still remember at the beginning of this pandemic back in March last year, our governor asked us to stay at home. Uh, and vast majority of our population enthusiastically supported that, uh, that recommendation from our governor. And without having to really spend much time and effort on enforcement, because people want to keep all of us safe. People want this pandemic to end, and I strongly believe that the people of Millbrae will do the same. And last but not least, I want to, you know, bring one important point, um, is that this mandate is not about. Any individual council member or even the entire council. This is about keeping our people safe, this is about keeping our businesses open from shutting down again. And all twenty two thousand five hundred of all of us, um, must work together and come together. And committing, committing to doing what's right and committing to this mandate. Because only the people of Millbrae and those who live here and work here and dine here could make this mandate possible. You're the only one who can make this meaningful and make this successful. And those who committed to this mandate and committed to this vaccination effort. They're the champion to our children, twelve and under. They are the champion to our seniors, who are still uneasy about getting into a mass gathering and dining in our restaurants. And they are the true protector to those who are most vulnerable in our communities. And so, um, with that, I want to open it up to all my colleagues and, um. Hopefully, we can come to some conclusion tonight and, uh. Find ways to protect our most vulnerable, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Ca- City Council, I I see Gina Pappan, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and, um, I'd like to thank my colleague Anders Fung for bringing this forward because. I've learned a lot, um, of things that, uh, didn't even know within our community. Um, we do have a very high percentage of people who are vaccinated, yet. The virus is still doing what it does best, and it's mutating, because that's all it has to do. And people are still being exposed, and there are breakthrough cases, and all of this is happening. So, public safety is our primary concern here. Um, I will note that we cannot be hypocritical here. Because as I understand it, our own fire department, like twenty percent of our firefighters are not vaccinated. And to me, I think we need to walk the walk. As we talk, the talk here is that we need to take that step first and foremost, is that. Our city employees are frontline public servants here. And we need to, if we're going to mandate anything here, I think we need to start with our own city staff. Um, and public safety in particular here. Now, I know that, um, there have to be certain modifications here, whether it's medical or religious exemptions, if we're looking at this. I know that, um, San Francisco Airport is looking at a similar, um, type of a mandate here, so there, there are a whole bunch of elements here. And I I am concerned about places like. We, we only, our, our businesses have been struggling, so of course. Um, we have to be concerned about that, and a lot of them have sent us emails. Uh, in support of this, a lot of residents have spoken in support of it, and some have spoken against it, so we, we are getting. Community feedback, which is very, very important here. I will point out, I do think the letter from the California Restaurant Association must be considered here. If we are to take something like this on. Uh, talking about outdoor dining and drive-throughs need to be exempt. Uh, customers entering the restaurant for pickup orders, uh, not dining in. Um, you know, I don't want, I think there has to be some sort of consistency here. So, I believe Contra Costa County just implemented a regulation, um, Los Angeles County. San Francisco here, I don't think we should be overreaching. There has to be some consistency for people to follow, uh, along the way here. I think in order to be constitutional, you do have to consider, uh, medical and religious exemptions. Uh, what constitutes proof of vaccines and conditions for private events now. I've just become alerted to, there may be a private event at, um. Green Hills Country Club this week, um, that could actually be a super spreader. So, I'm, I I am concerned, and in this conversation, I hope that we discuss these things further. I think there are a lot of people in the public that want to be heard about this, so I look forward to hearing that conversation. But I would like this council to consider instructing our city manager first and foremost. That if we're going to mandate anything, it starts with the city employees and then take it from there, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Pappan. Any other council members want to speak before the public comes in? Uh, Chief Baron, I do see your hand. Vice Mayor Aliva, please go.
Yeah, I just want to compliment Councilmember Fung for bringing this to our attention. Um. I think there's a lot of work to be done with what you're proposing here. Um, and I think. And I think Councilmember Papen brought up a few points that I would probably agree with. And specifically, we are a small enough town that we probably could pretty much define each and every one of the different businesses that are, would benefit from this and those that wouldn't. I'm very, I would be so pro in regards to supporting this if, in fact, it was going to help our businesses. Because I think that is not, not just the safety and healthy, health of of the constituents or the residents, but also we need to help our businesses. There's no doubt. And I would like to listen a little bit more to the pros and cons of that. I know that one of my concerns with that element of the businesses is that there's a lot of hardship out there with, with employees. There's not a lot of employees out there to actually ask for one more to mandate checking for vaccination, you know, certificates. I'd like to hear about that from them. I, I, I think that we need to define what services are. And I think I voiced that to you already, Councilmember. But I want to be specific to the public. You know, I'm concerned with things like restaurants when we talk about our Baskin and Robbins. I'm concerned about restaurants when we talk about Starbucks who serves a sandwich, Pete's. There's, there's different. I think that a city manager could probably help us define all of that and we could get through this. But I think that conversation is an incredible, incredibly healthy conversation, no pun on, no pun intended. I think that the fact that we are looking to look for a solution for this pandemic and our people and our constituents and our businesses, I think it's, you know, it's heroic for you to bring it up. So, I thank you for that. And I would really, whether Gina, Councilmember Papen says we start in City Hall, wherever we start, we need to further. So, I don't want to, I don't want to end it tonight. I think that, you know, you paved the way to us looking for a solution. I'm not so sure we found it tonight or if we will find it tonight. But I know that it's very important to bring this up and I'm very grateful that you did.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I don't see any other council members. I will say that I, so speaking as a council member, I agree with everything Councilwoman Papen said and the Vice Mayor. I too read a lot of comments, but I've been getting comments from our public for the last month. Very concerned that we go the mandate way. I've been watching a lot of national news and I've been watching a lot of the national doctors. The one, the doctor that happens to be black, who created the mechanism to do the fast creation of the vaccine. And I do see how the medical profession and a lot of the talking heads are, hey, we want to move on. We want, we want to get there. But if we're talking about bringing our community together, we do have people who have had the back, have had COVID and either cannot get the vaccine yet or don't want the vaccine. How are we going to let them into a restaurant? There are a number of other concerns on that. I will tell you, my mother, age ninety-four, ultra-liberal, does not support mandating this. So, and there is somebody who is very, very high risk that I have been living for, as we all have, nineteen months protecting her. So, I'm, I'm not quite there yet, but I'm open to hearing more. And again, here's a couple of my points. When I read outdoor activities in terms of what does it really mean? Our fitness center is going to be opening. It's an outdoor activity. Does that mean we have to have a staff person standing there checking for vaccine records before someone use at the skateboard park? Every one of our parks. Every time we open up the library, does somebody, well, maybe that's not quite in there. I know the city manager has told some of us they're already protected and they're already wearing, including mandatory that mask wearing. So, where does that boundary go? I guess I'm with the Vice Mayor. I have more questions than I have answers for on that. With that, I know Chief Baron has been waiting. Chief, I'm going to open it up for public comment. And Chief, please take the floor for as much time as you need.
Thank you, Mayor Schneider. Basically, it's just a correction of numbers. And I understand Councilmember Papen received some information from one of the Burlingame Council people about the percentage of vaccinated people within the fire department. That number is incorrect. It was stated at twenty percent. We're at ten percent. So, we're kind of right in line with the Millbrae community. That's ninety-two percent. So, just a correction in that number.
Thank you, Chief. Opening it up to the public first up Yo-Yo Schway.
Thank you, Mayor Schneider. We appreciate that the city of Millbrae is attempting to study this issue. But we are very concerned about the impact that a measure like this would have on business. More restrictions are not necessarily going to help businesses get back on their feet. And we already heard from various council members who have talked about exceptions to the rules. Talking about situations in which this may be difficult to enforce. And we as a business do not want to get engaged on this political issue. We live in a county where ninety-three percent of people are vaccinated. Where restaurants have been suffering so hard over the past one and a half years. Have finally found some sense of stability in navigating what has become a maze and labyrinth of changing regulations change by day and some, you know, sometimes today. We are very fortunate to do business in a community that takes safety seriously. And we always put safety over profits. We were the first restaurant perhaps in state to immediately get all of our employees vaccinated. We went down early. We got all of our employees vaccinated at the county event center. And we don't hire anyone who's not vaccinated. So, by no means are we anti-vaccine. However, we simply do not have the means to enforce a vaccine mandate at the door. We don't have the staff. We don't have the energy. And we don't have the time to explain this vaccine mandate or to get into political arguments with customers at the door. I think the city council needs to approach this from the perspective of hard-working business owners who are simply trying to provide a service or sell a good and are not interested in participating in perhaps a single council member's grandstanding or pandering. We are very, we're very we're very respectful and we lend deference to the science. And I think we really need to understand that especially for outdoor dining. There is no evidence to show that there is a high risk of transmission when dining outdoors. We cannot possibly afford an outdoor dining mandate of some sort. And I agree with Councilmember Papen. We need to walk the walk if we're going to talk the talk. And I think Councilmember Fung at the Art and Wine Festival was walking around greeting people without a mask. And that's quite curious when he expresses how scary and fearful he is of this.
Mr. Schway, I think we lost you. The clock is still ticking, but I assume that you are done. Next up is Ms. Maybel Regaspe. Now, we've got that right item for you, Ms. Regaspe. Elaine, she may need help unmuting. You're on.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor. Thank you so much for, for, for your time. I know I've emailed every single one of you and I thank you for being the only one who took time to respond. Anyway, I second the first speaker. I speak against this mandate of indoor and outdoor vaccination proof. If we have ninety-two point seven percent vaccination rate for the people over twelve years of age. What, what is the use for mandate? Mandate is simply just a way of control. And, and he was right when he noted that Congressman, Councilmember Fung was, was in the Arts and Wine Festival without a mask. And now you're mandating as people who wanted to exercise our medical freedom. If we, vaccination is individual decision. It's not the government. So, if you keep saying that this is, this is going to end the pandemic, that's not true. We've been here eighteen months, close to two years. And still with this percentage of vaccinated people, we still are in the pandemic. So, that's not true. You have to consider that people who decide not to be vaccinated have valid concerns. This vaccine is, is in question. And this is our body that you want us to vaccinate just so we can go inside the restaurant or gym or spa or nail salon. You have no right to do that to us. It is our decision if you want to do, to, to get vaccinated. If the seniors are immunocompromised, Eve, don't you think it is individuals' responsibility? If they're immunocompromised, we tell people, if you're sick, don't go out, stay home. The same thing applies to immunocompromised elderly people. Right? So, I, I just encourage you. I quoted the sheriff of Riverside County. Because he gets it. As a government and politicians, you have to come to realize that the only reason you guys exist because we, the people, formed our government to secure the blessings of individual liberty and freedom. Liberty and freedom. It is ours. You don't have the right to take it from us. This is our free will that our Creator gave us. And you're trying to, you're trying to get it from us by mandating. Vaccination is one thing. Mandating is forcing. So, that's not right. That is so unconstitutional. I hope you, you guys think about this. Think about the people. Think about the businesses. Don't think too much about your power because it was given to you. It can also be taken away. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Regaspe. Any other comments from the public? For public information, many emails, a couple of, one letter. I actually forgot to forward the letters I've been getting for the last month to the city clerk to enter into the public record. City clerk, do you want to, do we want to enter them or just by you having them and sending them to council there in the public record?
You could share any additional correspondence you have with me, but I just want.
I believe Becky M. had her hand up.
Yes, that's what I wanted to mention.
Oh, thank you. Oh, my apologies, Ms. M. Becky, please go for, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. I'm a resident of Millbrae and have been for over a decade. And I just want to remind all of you that your, your job is, it's an elected job and it is elected by we, the people. And your job is to uphold the laws which are under both the California Constitution as well as the United States Constitution. So, I'm just asking, is it, if this is the route that you guys are going to go, is the government wanting to protect, protect the vulnerable from all transmission, transmissible viruses? Because this is the route that you're going. And for those residents who are listening and are, that are supporting this passport. Let me ask you two questions. What happens when the government, this is local government, deems that two jabs isn't sufficient? Or one company's jab isn't the right one? Like if you got the Johnson and Johnson, they deem that that's not sufficient. Now, you got to go get a different one. And maybe you have to get multiple ones. My second question is also, if you have to carry a card or a pass on your phone proving you've injected a drug into your body in order to gain access to gyms and restaurants today. But tomorrow, it'll be banks, grocery stores and publicly funded places like libraries. And this would, in order for you to freely move about in society, how in the world are you a free person? And let's just cut to the chase and call this vaccine passport what it is, communism. And why do I say this is communism and not for the health and safety of citizens as it is being touted? So, let me ask you what the message has been given consistently over the last eighteen months. Has it been about relationships? Has it been about hope? Has it been about discussion with immunity? Or, or anything like that? Or has it been about isolation, control and fear? Obviously, what we have heard consistently from politicians and media and the government is that it's all about fear and fear is poison. And that's how you know that this proposal is communism. So, I vehemently oppose a vaccine passport in Millbrae. I yield my time.
Thank you, Ms.
Sorry, I don't have her last name for the record. Would you like to state your last name?
It's Miller.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. I cannot see all the hands when I'm in this format. Anybody else raising their hands?
I'm assuming Lori Butterfield is interested in speaking.
Oh, yes. Thank you for giving me your time. I just wanted to point out a couple of things. It feels like there are some misconceptions about the vaccine. The underlying assumption with these mandates is that the vaccine will prevent transmission of this virus. And from what we are finding, the vaccine does not prevent transmission. In fact, the creators of the vaccine even say the purpose of this vaccine is so that people will not get as severe of a case of COVID. And that's great for people who want to do that. But it's, it makes no sense when we're talking about mandates. If you're saying that only vaccinated people can be in a place where we are seeing plenty of people who are vaccinated get COVID. They are contagious. They transmit the disease. So, you can't tell me that if we're doing mandates, especially as drastic as not letting people who are unvaccinated dine outdoors. That it's really to keep people safe. If you truly cared about people being safe, those people shouldn't be around vaccinated people either. In fact, people who have a negative COVID test are probably safer than people who are vaccinated and are asymptomatic and can be spreading the disease. Or, you know, maybe they're not asymptomatic. But it's shown that people who are vaccinated are transmitting the disease. So, you're not leaving any room for negative tests. You're not leaving any consideration for people who have reasons that they can't get a vaccine. Some people, I'm not just talking about medical exemptions, but some people have autoimmune disorders, a lot of other things that prevent them from being able to safely get the vaccine. And we're talking about just completely leaving them out. It's not right. And as some of the other people have said, that taking the vaccine should be your personal choice. We should not be unable to work, unable to dine out, unable to be out in public over a choice that we make. So, I really hope people will consider the purpose of the vaccine. And that if it doesn't prevent transmission, these mandates make no sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Butterfield. So, City Clerk, anyone else? I see Michael Kelly raising his hand. Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, thank you very much. I just feel compelled to answer to the last few people sharing comments. The purpose of the vaccine is to not die from the disease. It's not about stopping transmission. That can't be helped. The vast majority of people dying from COVID are unvaccinated. You're all part of a society. You, yes, you get personal choice. You have some freedoms. But we're in a society. It is mandated across the country. Children have to be vaccinated to go to school. It's to keep everybody safe. If there's a reason you personally cannot get vaccinated, they've made accommodations for that. And you can get, you know, a specific exemption, but not easily. You have to kind of prove your case. This is about society and being beyond self. And the, the fact that people want to claim personal freedom and choice. What are the people that want to have the choice to not get infected? Because our community, our society can't attain herd immunity. What, where's their choice? Where's their freedom? It's that old adage, hey, your ability to go do whatever you want, to swing your arm or not stops before it hits my face. You don't get that right. And I just felt compelled to say it because it seems like the other people sharing their comments are incredibly selfish, ill-informed and really need to understand the science. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Any other hands raised?
I'm not sure if Kathleen Kamora would like to speak. I did see a reaction, but I'm not sure if she wants to.
Thank you. Thank you, Elaine. I was just, obviously, this is something that really has to be considered very seriously and a lot of discussion has to go into it. I don't think anyone's ready to make a decision tonight. But my concern would be some of the outdoor events that we have in Millbrae. I mean, we had a very successful art and wine festival and people were very respectful wearing masks. And I, I'm not sure if there was any negative results from that, whether it was a super spreader or not. And I, I'm not sure if there was any negative results from that, whether it was a super spreader or not. But I thought it was a very well-attended event. There were many, many children there, many families with small children looking extremely happy. The concern, I mean, what about Beats and Brews tomorrow, the Autumn Festival on Saturday? I mean, if we are going to demand that we have vaccination proved to go to these public events, what are the, what's the logistics? I mean, we're all, these are all volunteer events. And how can we as volunteers provide enough people to sort of check people as they come in when the area is so open? That, that's, that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kamora. Stephen Rinaldi?
Yes, thank you, Ann. Can everyone hear me okay?
Coming in great.
Fantastic. I'd like to start off by saying and thanking all people of Millbury who have voiced their concern about this mandate. As it is modern day segregation, there are a lot of us folks out here that medically have been advised not to get vaccinated. I will tell you that two people that are very close to me, one came down with Gillian's beret as a result of the actual vaccination and another Bell palsy. As for people that already contracted COVID, it's very noteworthy to say that they have antibodies already. And how are we going to show that proof of antibodies to these vaccine passports? Last but not least, I'll tell you this, that while I was in San Francisco a couple of weeks ago, I myself, who's not vaccinated and proud of it, denied entry to a restaurant. Quite frankly, if you guys want to deny these business owners of business in Millbury, you're gonna do it with the mandate because I will not shop or spend any of my hard-earned money in this town anymore and gladly take it to another city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rinaldi. Mr. Barrett, Robert Barrett?
It's actually Janine Barrett and I'm actually against this mandate. I don't think it's constitutional whatsoever. And there are exceptions. And I'm very upset, Michael Kelly, by your comment, being a representative of ARC and making a comment that people that are not vaccinated are selfish. That is just a very reckless comment when you don't know individuals' personal reasons why they can't get the vaccine. Because there are people out there that have cancer, and I have had cancer, and people that are on anti-cancer fighting medicine, the vaccine doesn't work on some of those people. So you mean to tell me that you're going to segregate the people that have already fought for their life with cancer and they can't get the vaccine? You're going to call them names and segregate them? I don't think it's right, and I think you should retract your comment and apologize to those who can't get vaccinated. I yield my time.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. But, and, and I apologize, but let's keep moving forward on this and try not to make it personal at this point. Because in that case, I will stop the discussion on that. Right now, we're trying to hear people's stories and thank you for sharing your story about cancer and what it means when you're still fighting cancer and what you can and cannot do. Are there other comments from the public? City clerk, do you see any?
I do not, but as you stated, the city received multiple comments by email and that was shared with city council. I received five today and the full council received all the comments that I received.
Okay, and, and they, some were from restaurateurs in support, some were from restaurateurs, one was from not supporting. Some of the comments were from our public members supporting, some are not supporting. So the comments have come both, I, I think a number of people suggested additional things the city could do to encourage our businesses to make sure that they stay a safe environment. You know, mask-wearing, making sure that the tables in restaurants are still separated far enough apart. I know that we were at Peter's Cafe over the weekend and they very carefully spread us around the, the restaurant on there. So I think that there is some information we can take from many of the comments we received and do some more public education on that. With that, I'm going to close public comment. I don't see any other hands raised. And bring it back to city council. We have not heard from Councilman Holliver. I don't want to put, there we go. Thank you, Councilman Holliver.
Hey, thank you. Thank you to Councilmember Fung for bringing this suggestion forward. I agree with you that the vaccines are clearly the way to get ourselves out of this pandemic. And it's obvious from some of the public comments that there is a lot of misinformation going on right now about, and has been going on for quite some time about the vaccine and unfortunately has been spread by many members of, or elected officials. There was some data today that showed that the case rate in California is roughly eight times higher for those who are unvaccinated versus those who are vaccinated. So clearly it does help significantly to reduce the spread of the virus while not perfect. And I am just as frustrated as anyone else with those of us, those members of the public who are unvaccinated and keeping us from putting this pandemic behind us. That being said, I am concerned about this proposal that it may be a bit of an overreach for this council to consider at this time. At this point, the, we are a small city. We do not have a health department or a health officer. San Mateo County has not come forward, as far as I know, have not considered a vaccine mandate for these types of businesses. And, you know, I'd feel much more comfortable if this mandate were coming from a higher form of government, higher level of government, either from the county or from the state as opposed to from our small city of Millbury. You know, businesses have struggled quite a bit throughout the pandemic with many of these restrictions. I think it would be an onus on these businesses to have to check vaccine records for each customer coming in. Would it also apply to the staff members? That wasn't very clear in the report here for workers. And, you know, I, I wouldn't want any business to have to turn a customer away because of this ordinance. At this time, businesses are free to institute this type of policy for their own business without it being a mandate. I know some restaurateurs are, are appreciative of this and they're very welcome to put forward a mandate for their own business. But at this point, I would not feel comfortable moving forward. I know we don't even have a mandate for city staff or for city contractors. As I mentioned, not all members of the fire department have been vaccinated. I'm glad it's under 10%, not 20%. The, either the school district or the high school district have mandated vaccines for students who are 12 and over. I think that is a very high source of potential transmission in schools. So I think there are other, you know, opportunities for trying to increase the spread of that, the, increase the rate of vaccination in our community without a, a, a narrow mandate Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Holliver. I think, I, I agree with all your points and actually you reminded me of what happens a lot on a TV show, Joy Reid. And they talk about the low vaccination rates again along some communities of color. And again, the historical reason for that and how important communication is. And then they cite a number of examples that by working with people one-on-one and explaining, it is increasing the vaccination rates in some of the groups that are unvaccinated. So I think that there's a great deal of work to do. I would also say in talking to the city manager about this, when, when this was first, first came up to me about three weeks ago, was what are, how difficult it is for cities, especially small cities like ours, and where it would be nice with the county taking the lead. In San Francisco's case, that is a county in Costa County, which has had a much, much higher rate of infections than our county. We're one of the best in the state and we are one of the best cities in the state. We're under city manager, what was the last time we checked, .91, .92, which is, Tom has this better than I do. But we've been watching the counties that are doing this. LA considered it, but now are hopefully leading it to the county of Los Angeles. So then there's one set of rules for everybody within the county. It's a whole lot easier to administer and enforce that way. Councilman Fung, you brought this forward. I, I think what I've heard is you don't quite have the votes tonight. Do you have a course of action you might like to suggest?
Yes, there's a few things I'd like to say. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for all my colleagues for their comment and suggestions. First of all, I wanted to say, as a country, we're able to beat measles, we're able to beat polio. Or even as a population, as, as human race, we beat smallpox and many other horrible diseases via the effort of mass vaccination. And this coronavirus should be no different. We will do the same. We just need to come together and commit to this. So to everyone who is listening on this call, please, you know, listen to the science and, you know, and also we need to be responsible not only to ourselves, but also to our friends, our neighbors, and especially to those who are most vulnerable. Especially to those who may not necessarily be able to protect themselves with the vaccine at the moment. So vaccination is a responsible thing to do. And, you know, as far as, you know, the private event that some, someone, a council member brought up, you know, I was just being invited to another private event recently in San Francisco. And, you know, the first question I asked is, is everybody vaccinated? And the answer is, since the city dictate and mandated the vaccination for everyone joining at that private event, they save the effort of asking everyone if they are vaccinated or not. And so, you know, it, it just automatically ensure the safety and the confidence of everyone going in. So in terms of employee confidence, you know, some might perceive this as an inconvenience based on some of the comment that I have heard. But I think the benefit of such small inconvenience outweighs everything. Because now that you can ensure that your restaurant employees, you know, will be able to serve pretty much everybody who are vaccinated. So whether it's indoor or outdoor. And so I think that is an important element to boost the confidence from all of these employees who are coming back to the workforce and be able to work in an environment knowing that everyone that you serve and work with are fully vaccinated. And as far as to the effect of our businesses, I've also done some research and outreach and talked to some of the restaurant owners and operators in San Francisco as well. You know, at the beginning of this Delta variant, a lot of these restaurants got empty tables and people are reluctant to come out and, and dine and entertain because they see the Delta being, you know, surging and it's affecting a lot of people. But as the mandate goes in, these restaurants, you know, their, their booking just go off the roof because people are restoring their confidence coming in, knowing that they are dining next to people that are fully vaccinated. It just give them that much more confidence to come out and restore their lives, you know, in a safe way and feel confident knowing that they can restore some degree of normalcy. So I think this will help enhance our businesses and keeping them from, you know, the fear of, or the risk of shutting down again. You know, I appreciate Councilmember Papen, your comment regarding, you know, consistency. I'd like to have a greater discussions on that and I do believe that there's a, a lot of value to being consistent throughout. So I would love to have a greater discussion on that topic. So, you know, I understand that this is a topic that requires more discussions and more input from the public. But I do, when I speak to all these businesses locally, I do see a lot of wants and needs to having this mandate. So that, because they do see the value of it and then see the need of it and how important this mandate could, could protect the employees, could protect the businesses, could protect every customers, and most importantly, protect those who are most vulnerable where the vaccines are not available for them yet. So with that, you know, I, I wanted to see if the council would be willing to entertain, you know, an option to put together perhaps a, a subcommittee to explore this a little further and bring back some recommendations. Hopefully we can come to some conclusion and some agreement on this.
Thank you, Councilman Fung, Councilman Papen, and then the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Fung. For the one comment that was made about pandering, this council's not here to pander anyone. We're here to discuss public safety and public policy. So, and I think there's been a great discussion tonight about that. Also, the comment about our creator here, our, our creator's given us these clothes, this technology, and they're giving us a vaccine. So I hope people will take advantage of that because that's what's being offered and it's probably the safest way to get rid of this. Yes, the one speaker who said, we who are vaccinated can spread it. That's absolutely true. But we need to keep people safe, keep them out of hospitals, out of the emergency rooms. And we want to encourage people, if you can, if you medically can be vaccinated, please do so. The city's, I hope, is going to offer up where you can get vaccinated or where you can get tested tonight so we can share that information with everyone and it's available to everyone here. I really want to emphasize, as Councilmember Holliver said, the restaurants can do this on their own if they choose to do that. It is of concern that we don't have any, you know, I would like to see more uniformity. The county, the county, I believe, is taking it up next Tuesday. My concerns, in addition to what I've already mentioned here, is that we really haven't seen the spread of COVID through restaurants, particularly with the outdoor dining or the indoor dining. Our positivity rates are dropping lately, thankfully. But it is still being spread out there and this is what we are trying to do to keep people safe. So I think we should tonight really look to the county, watch our numbers, try to make it, educate people with the reality and the science here to make it safe for people within our community. And to say, you know, one person can not be vaccinated, go wherever they want, and if you are autoimmune sensitivities, you should stay home. We need to come together. We need to protect each other. So please, talk to your doctors because that's probably the best information you're ever going to get. So we want to encourage people to do that. I think the biggest problem here is that there are too many variables here. We don't know who has a medical or religious exemption, what actually would constitute proof of vaccination, who is going to enforce that. Thankfully, we're not in that critical position at this point in time. I think we should wait and see what the county does. Again, encourage everyone, if you're going to the grocery store or wherever, please wear your masks. Be considerate and try not to spread, even, even if you've been vaccinated. Put your masks on and let's bring the community together here. I just, I think it's too difficult on our businesses at this moment, moment in time. And thankfully, the numbers in our county are going down slowly. They're still there, but they're going down slowly. So I don't think this is the right move at this point in time. But the conversation has been good. I really want this council, though, to unite and instruct the city manager. I think all of our employees, particularly fire, I don't care if it's only 10%, to me, that's bothersome. We need to make sure that our employees are vaccinated because they are out in the public, serving the public. And I think that's really dangerous if we are not working with that. I know the city manager has already issued a mandate that contract employees must be vaccinated. So he's taken that one step. I think we need to go further to ensure public safety and make sure our employees are vaccinated or tested weekly, whatever the regulations are, so that we can keep people safe. So I, again, I don't want to, I don't want our restaurants to be put in a position where So I, again, I don't want to, I don't want our restaurants to be put in a position where they're facing hostility here. But we do want to keep people safe. So I, that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Papen. Vice Mayor Oliva.
Yeah, I think pretty much everything has been said, which I totally agree upon. And Councilmember Fung, I think that what, what you brought up tonight was so important. And so important that I think that it's really important that we just don't say, okay, it's not good at this time. I think what we need to do is, this is a wait and see game. We don't know what's going to happen next month or the next time we meet. So I, I would, I would suggest that quite possibly when we get the, the city updates or maybe our city manager can add for public comment to what's going on in the county. What are the statistics? And so we can keep our city of Millbury aware of what is going on around us. So that, you know, if we, if we do need to make some changes or we, we want to be on top of it or we let our public be educated to what is going on in the county, I think it's important. And we can talk about it and we, we should be open to any ideas. Whether this one is going to work or not is, it's irrelevant to what happens tonight. It's, everybody here that had something to say is very valuable. And if it's going to get us through this and get it over with, I want to hear it. So a wait and see for me. And I'm very grateful for my colleagues and public comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Point of clarification, you used the term, the city, the updates. Do you mean the Council Friday updates? Or do you mean the updates that we send out through e-notify?
I, I mean, before council meeting, so that we can, because everything, everybody that's here is engaged with council. So whatever, whatever it takes, you put on MCTV, whatever, whatever works for communication. We've always, we've worked on that as far as our council goals. So, so Mayor, you can, you can take that direction for, you know, being, for getting the word out.
Say, thank you. I just needed to know if you just meant the Friday update for us, the five of us, or for that. Perfect. We'll get more information out to the public, information to the public. Thank you. And City Man, go ahead, City Manager.
Oh, go ahead.
No, I was just actually going to turn to you. In terms of getting more public information out.
Based on this discussion, we do have some information that we were able to pick up that we'd be happy to put up on a slide. It's COVID-19 vaccination resources here at the county. This can be found, as, as well as any updates on COVID-19 at the smcgov.org. This county has a, just an outstanding website with dashboard information that, that any member of the public can log into and get information. But these are, here's vaccination, COVID-19 vaccine resources, no cost COVID-19 vaccine clinics at myturn.ca.gov. Myturn.ca.gov for no charge COVID-19 vaccines. And then also, City Clerk, if you can put up the COVID-19 testing resources. Again, you can visit the smcgov.org backslash testing. Again, smcgov.org backslash testing. And these are resources for COVID-19 testing at no cost.
City Manager, since I've had a couple of COVID tests recently, I can tell you that you can get them very easily at South San Francisco's parking lot. There is a location in Burlingame. The South City location is open seven days a week. They're fantastic. Okay, with that, I, I do not see us moving forward at this time. Council, if there's nothing else to say, I'm going to end this topic. Thank you, Councilman Fung, for taking a brave stance. And it was a good conversation tonight. And as Councilwoman Papen said, please, the city strongly encourages everyone to get their vaccine. We strongly encourage you to wear your mask. And I will add, this is, it's been a year and a half of incredible stress on everyone. And sometimes when you get near the end, we all start getting a little testier and grumpier. So I would just ask all of us to remember to be kind. I know that sounds silly, but I've been a longtime Red Cross disaster volunteer. You see it as we get close to the end, it gets harder to be nice to each other. So be nice, care for each other. Thank you. All right, our last agenda item tonight. Staff wrote an incredible staff report, giving us recommendations on how we should vote at the League of California Cities Conference in a week and a half. And Elaine, are you our staff person tonight, giving the update or the presentation?
So Mayor, I, I can just give the council a quick briefing, if you'd like it. I, I think that, you know, it's in the staff report. Be happy to answer any questions or just briefly mention the two resolutions that is proposed by the League of Cities.
I think the public should at least hear the one about sales tax. It's critically important. So the other one is too, but sales tax is very important.
So, so there are two resolutions being proposed by the League of California Cities for a vote at the upcoming state conference here at the end of, of September. The first one is a resolution that has to do with fair distribution of sales tax that's related to internet sales. Internet sales companies, when, when, when those companies would lease property, the sales tax would, would be allocated based on a formula of online sales. So there would not be a point of sale per se. Internet companies have now purchased land. They've, they now have a physical address. And those companies are using that physical address as their point of sale. Thus, other cities, like Millbury, for example, are losing the sales tax for online sales that are residents purchase. So this resolution is to request that the state legislature close that loophole and continue to maintain the online sales tax allocation that they have. And, and they closed that loophole of internet sales companies having a physical address. And then the second resolution.
I'm sorry, real quick question, didn't the feds already do this?
They did. It's the Wayfair decision. But this, this, so that Wayfair decision is a little bit related, Councilmember Papen. But since now there's a point of sale, physical address, they're using that physical address, therefore kind of obfuscating that Wayfair decision. This would close that loophole and continue to implement the Wayfair decision is about the best way that I can explain it.
Okay, that's, that's good. So everywhere, there, there's a warehouse that's like the Amazon package is going through. If that warehouse was here, then we would get the benefit of the tax.
Of the online sales tax as it's allocated, right? But as it is right now, if that particular company owns that site, they don't lease it. The point of sale is at that address. So obviously, we've got about 16 cities that are opposed to this, that have the large warehouses. And all the other cities are, are, seem to be in favor based on city manager discussion. So the, you know, and it, and we, we are obviously recommending that, that this is supported.
And, okay, so one final question here, would this apply to like locker pickups? Because you see, like, some of our businesses have a, like an Amazon locker where you go get it. I just, I don't know how that applies.
Yeah, so, so that, that's a great question. So that's not where the transaction occurs. The transaction occurs online, right? And so it, it still would be that online, not where you pick it up, but where you order it from, where you actually buy it from. So if you're at your home, buying online.
Point of sale.
Yeah, the point of sale is at your home, rather than, rather than the physical address in some other city or that locker, you know, as an example. But where, where you pick it up, where you pick it up is not, not.
Okay, so if you're buying online in Millbury, then you're paying the Millbury tax. If you're buying online in San Francisco, where their tax is way higher, they pay more.
Yeah, that's right. And there, there is, yeah, that's right. And the state legislature actually came up with a, a formula for that. Instead of looking at every single transaction, they just said it's a formula based on your, 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 your data of current sales. So a city like Millbury's, where bedroom community and our sales tax has not been that large, that formula actually, for lack of a better word, cheats us a little bit. But as we improve our economic development and our sales tax grows and it gets healthier, that will change the equation and the allocation that we receive under the state formula.
Right, because I, I see if they're buying online, I'm still paying the tax, but we're just not getting any of it.
We're getting, we're, we're getting some of it.
Okay.
One question, you're talking Amazon, so you're talking about things that people order. What about things like applications on your phone? Because you're buying that application. So everybody that has a phone here has a million apps on their phone and they pay $9.99 at the time. But we don't collect anything on that.
Yeah, you know what? That, that is a great question, Vice Mayor. And I believe that the answer is, I'm going to have to look into this and actually get back to verify. But I believe that's still recorded through the Franchise Tax Board.
Oh, because like if you buy Quicken, like you buy Quicken for your computer.
Yeah, so, so let's say you, you ordered that on your phone.
Yeah.
They know, you know, obviously that, you know, where your, where your address is, right?
Your billing address.
Your billing address.
Well, yeah, because your phone is attached to, it, it comes off your credit card and your phone, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
So we, but we don't collect any taxes on that. And that's got to be an ample amount of tax.
Yeah, I, you know, that, I, I'm going to have to do a little bit more research on that and get back to you because I.
Yeah, when you don't have any, when you have some extra time, will you get on that?
Yeah, right.
But it's, it's worthwhile. I'm sorry, Tom, I put you on this. It's good for the public to know how little internet sales tax revenue we get because we don't have a lot of retail space. And that's what you referenced, when, as our sales grow, if we get somebody in the old office depot, our sales grow, we get a, a better formula. It hurts bedroom communities and small communities.
But even, even more information for our public, even though the public pays 9.3% in sales tax, the city of Millbury only receives 1% of that. So just like property tax, people pay 1% of value on property tax. The city only receives 16 cents of that dollar.
On the dollar.
So we do not receive, you know, all 9.3% or all 1%. We get very little, actually, as a city.
But, but to tell the residents who are listening, we are, we are working on that. We are fighting to get our fair share. So I thank you for that. The other, you were going into the second issue.
Well, and the, and the second resolution is just to request that the governor and legislature provide the necessary funding for the California Public Utility Commission to fulfill its obligation to inspect railroad lines and ensure that rail operators are removing illegal dumping, graffiti and homeless encampments that degrade the quality of life and result in, in increased public safety concerns. And so we're recommending that the council affirm that resolution as well.
And then the third part is some bylaw changes, including changing the name of the League of California Cities to CalCities. So I am hopeful that all five of us are comfortable with what staff recommended, which is a yes vote. And it would be a direction to me or the alternate, which I believe is Jean, Councilwoman Papen and Councilman Fung. I think that's how we made it, when we're up in Sacramento in a week and a half or next week for that vote. So with that, could I have a motion to approve staff's recommendations for three yes votes on the three resolutions at the Council of Cities?
Who's approved?
Second, I think, I, I think I heard Vice Mayor and then Councilwoman Papen, right?
Yes, please.
Okay, any further discussion? Please, Elaine, please call our last vote.
All right, Councilmember Holliver.
Hi.
Councilmember Fung.
Aye.
Councilmember Papen.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Oliva.
Aye.
Mayor Snyder.
Aye.
The city council provided guidance and recommendation for the resolution and proposed law by law amendments being considered at the 2021 League of California City Annual Conference by the vote of 5 to 0.
Thank you, City Clerk.
So Mayor, here's the, here's the great thing about technology. I have an answer for the Vice Mayor already. And, and that is, so virtual services are not taxed, obviously. And apps are, are considered a virtual service, so they're not taxable.
Huh. Another thing to fix.
Yeah, this sounds like some good legislation ahead of us.
Thank you, City Manager.
Thank you, Mike Sung, our Finance Director, for researching that as we're talking and sitting in the TV.
Thank you, guys.
Before we close, it has been almost six weeks or over six weeks since we've met. I would like to do a little bit of update because I would like to share one piece of really good news for the Rec Center that you may not know. So I don't want to pick on Ruben or Anders. Gina, would you be ready to go forward and share council updates, council comments?
Sure. Why not? Okay, and the Art and Wine Festival was pleasantly a success. We have a lot to learn moving forward there. So, and the Recreation Center did a little fundraising there on site. The response from the public was very positive. So that was great to hear. And it was really nice to see some of our local businesses actually participating this time. Pate Meats, Fiddler's Green, Bacchus, Dean's Produce. I think we will see more local participation in the future. And hopefully, everything went forward safely. As was mentioned earlier, it's a very busy weekend. And that also includes Fiddler's 30th anniversary. Hopefully, there's supposed to be a tiny bit of sprinkle, but it'll be a good, good event. Moving forward, MTC has been meeting. They have proposed their, the Blue Ribbon Transportation Recovery. Task Force has made several recommendations moving forward, hopefully leading to more seamless transportation between the 27 different transit agencies in our Bay Area. They still have a lot of good work to do. Moving forward safely is the most important thing, so that we can get people back on transit. The city of Millbury is, and other cities in San Mateo County are still trying to, we've gotten our objections into the high-speed rail authorities' plans at this point in time. Not that that can't happen, it just need to do it the right way. And we hope that they will see the light sometime soon so that Millbury, for one point, can go on with developments on the West Side. The Subcommittee is ready to move ahead with all of that. And I really want to thank everybody for the conversation tonight and hope everybody stays safe moving forward. Thank you very much. Can we bring up that information again? The COVID information while this goes on? Thank you.
Good idea. Thank you, Councilwoman Papen. Vice Mayor Oliva.
Yeah, pretty much ditto to all that. Thank you, Councilmember Papen, for saying all of the above. And I, I would agree 100%. The conversation was really nice tonight on both, both new, new subjects that we talked about, ARC and also the vaccine. I, the only thing I would add to what we've all done in the, in the last dark month we've had is get up at 5:30 in the morning in the dark, and that was a wonderful ceremony. Beautiful, beautifully done, very proud of Millbury. And thank you guys all for being there. It, it was, it was probably one of my favorite events so far.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. It, it was. Councilman Fung.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So youth advisory, so let me just bring that up a little bit. So the committee member voted a new chair, so congratulations on Mattel Torres. And also our new Vice Chair, Frederick, as well. So I look forward to these young leaders to do some really great things in the upcoming year. They're working on the next year's work plan. So they have a lot of, you know, big goals ahead of them. You know, the plastic bench is one of them. And they were, because they decided to join the effort with the Leos to recycle plastic. But hopefully, they can put together some new benches. We look forward to that. They're also interested in hosting a gaming program for this year in order to get some more youth involved in our committee and our, you know, many great programs that involve our young leaders. So, you know, they're also interested in working with law enforcement next year in the conversation of public safety and how youth can be a part of that resources in our success. So I think that's, you know, we've got some great, you know, youth leaders here. And I encourage everyone listening on this call, who, I think we still have a couple of spots open. So join our youth committees, advisory committee, as soon as you can. It's a great program. And we have the, let's see here, just make sure I got dates right. Our Mid-Autumn Festival is coming up on the 400 blocks of Broadway, this coming Saturday, between 12 to 7:30. So come on out, enjoy the nice weather, the tail end of our summer, actually autumn, I should say. So lots of music. It's a great. Um, it's a great, uh, opportunity to, uh, to come out and enjoy the nice weather. So, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Hallibur.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for all those, uh, comments and for all the events happening this weekend. Um, so I attended the, uh, CCAG, uh, Congestion Management Environmental Quality Committee meeting. Um, last month, there was, uh, a recommendation to approve, um, $13 million state transportation, uh, improvement program funding. This would be for the 10192 interchange. I'm looking to make that, um, interchange a little bit more efficient to relieve some of the traffic there. Um, I also attended the, uh, Sister Cities Commission meeting last month, and, um, there was a continuing discussion about tree planting around the Recreation Center. Um, it sounds like the trees that the committee would be interested in planting would not be the large specimen trees. Um, these would be smaller trees, maybe around a thousand, a couple thousand dollars each. Um, still relatively large, but, um, not quite the $10,000 to $25,000, um, massive trees that are currently being considered to be well around the Rec Center. And the commission also appointed, uh, Wilson Ho as the, um, liaison to, uh, for the commission to, uh, Dongguan China. I believe he works in the, um, trade office in Burlingame, um, with Dongguan businesses. That's all I have. Okay.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, the kind of exciting news and, and I apologize, Councilman Hallibur, I should have looped you in as the alternate to Peninsula Clean Energy. Peninsula Clean Energy or PCE has a program that they have been investigating called PPA, and I always get the first P wrong. Tom, PPA is Public Purchasing Agreement?
Power, power.
Power Purchasing Agreement.
Power agreement.
There we go. I I get the PPA mixed up. Well, they had been looking at a what happens is they provide a lot of the work, the RFP, and it gets solar panels onto public properties. They had been planning for, they called it the Chet Cootie Complex rather than City Hall. But thank you, Jane Cowell and City Manager, we had a meeting with, uh, the PCE staff and the solar panels are going to go on the Rec Center. The timing seems to be perfect for the construction schedule. So when we do reopen, and I don't want to give a time because I don't want to jinx us, uh, we will be solar. So, uh, thank you to Jan Pepper and her staff at PCE for changing. And thank you to the city manager and Jane um, and myself. We had a really terrific meeting and they agreed to switch. So yay. Um, and and yay for all of us, Millbrae, we're going to have solar panels on the Rec Center. The, um, other thing, and this is sort of be careful what you ask for. I have been working through Emergency Services Council about the growing particulate pollution problem that we have, especially here in North County. And there are no monitoring devices up here, the different agencies. We fall through the cracks, basically. But I will say thank you to, uh, Councilwoman Davina Hurt, who also wears a hat as being our city representative on the Bay Area Air Quality Management District and was appointed by the governor to CARB, the California Air Resources Board. She has been able to get us a program that typically only goes to equity communities. We are going to be given 70 air filters, which we commonly call HEPA filters, to go to low-income members of the Millbrae community who, it, there's a lot of strings on this, who are in an existing Medi-Cal program, um, and have, uh, asthma, COPD, bronchitis, injuries like that. So we had a meeting on that and it turned out to be a whole lot more complicated. And now the Bay Area, Bay Area Air Quality Management Staff will be giving a presentation at Emergency Services Council tomorrow. But, um, this is for me, and I know this will sound really weird and wonky. It is the beginning of an agency recognizing that Millbrae has unique problems because of all the transportation inputs into our community. So to me, it's a tiny thing, but it's also a big thing. And we will get news out to our, our members of the community about this program. There are just a number of steps that you have to go through. Um, I have really sad news that Millbrae Community Enhancement Advisory Committee is, after all the interviews, the interview committee did. We are losing two members, Brandon Chan and Alex Ma, both because they have bought homes outside of Millbrae. Uh, that's one of the reasons why we need affordable housing so we can keep our college-educated young people here. But I wish them the best. I've known them since they were in high school. They were an incredible asset to MCAC. We would love, we love having young people because they're technical. They came in and helped the older people on this committee uh, be productive by helping us become technically savvy. So, gentlemen, I wish you the best on your moves. Brandon's only going to South City. Alex is going to Portland, but we will miss you greatly. And, um, I think I will, uh, I also, I have never really talked about this. I'm a commissioner on a state commission on recycling. We have seven or eight bills sitting on the governor's desk. I, if the governor signs them, I'll talk a little bit more because it will have impacts on our recycling program. And today, the commission agreed to look at something that is a growing issue internationally, and it's artificial turf that breaks down in sunlight, becomes a, um, a particulate problem at the sewage treatment plant and in our waterways. But the commission has taken that, and the commission has also taken looking at upfront solutions to illegal dumping. I know that Councilwoman Papen is very interested on that. So we're looking at container types. Good news is our garbage hauler, I talked to them over the weekend, and they already have what we can do to stop the wind from blowing things over and blowing litter into the street. We're just taking it on now as a statewide issue. So with that, um, if council has nothing else to say, we have a cup, we have some sad news. Okay, we are closing in memory of two fabulous, very active Millbrae community members. Um, our longtime chair of the Sister City Commission, Marlene McBride's husband, Brian passed away. Um, Brian was a dear friend. It's very sad. Marlene, our hearts go out to you. And the service is this Saturday. If you are interested, I have the information. Um, and then we lost another dear community volunteer, Helen Habib. Um, a founding member of the Bay Area Special Olympics Lions Club, a, a very active member of the Millbrae Historical Society. Um, again, very sad to have lost such a great community member. So we are closing tonight's meeting in memory of Brian McBride and Helen, Helen Habib. Thank you. Um, terrific meeting. Um, everyone be safe. We will see you, um, picking up garbage and planting pollinator plants. Have a good week.